If we could please have the mayor come up and present our citations for tonight.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the council. I won't take up too much of your time. I just wanted to recognize the Chavo Club this evening. They have, anytime the city has called them, if it's for our toy drive, if it's for the Brandon Conde event, wherever it may be, they have graciously donated their hall, donated the food, cooked the food themselves. I can't say enough. And this has gone for a long time, even prior to Joe, you being a president. And I know you've been a member for a while, so I'm sure this is going to continue this tradition. I know tonight you've, I think, even have a check for the Veterans Organization. We appreciate the friendship of the Chavo Club. I think I can say that for all of us here. I think we've all been in the Chavo Club for maybe our own political event. Some of us are kickoffs for candidacy. So you've always treated us with lots of respect and love, and we appreciate what you've done for our community. So I have a citation, and I'll read the citation if you two gentlemen will come up. "Be it known to all that is honored, Mayor Carlo Di Maria, off my most sincerest congratulations to the entire Comenay Chavo Club, in recognition of this happy and especial occasion in recognizing your dedication and generosity to the City of Everett. On behalf of the City of Everett, I want to express our gratitude for all that you have done for the residents of our city, given this 24th day of February 2020." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a citation from Councilor Wayne Matusky.
Excellent, all right, sure.
And another donation to the veterans.
Thank you very much.
That's a total of $2,000 he gave to the veterans this year.
The Chavo Club has donated another $200 to the veterans, and this year that brings them to $2,000 to our veterans organizations. Thank you, thank you very much.
We've donated over $36,000 to charity people.
You want to, yeah, you want to say that? All right.
We donated over $36,000 to charity last year, which is toys and food, and the Thanksgiving dinner. The veterans donate halls several times, many times, and we just continue doing it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just...
Sure.
Thank you all. And on behalf of the Office of Veteran Services, I'd also like to extend my thanks and gratitude to the Chavo Club. In case anybody doesn't know how the Chavo Club came about, it's named in honor of U.S. Marine Corporal...
Coman.
Comenay Chavo. Coman was killed in action in Okinawa in World War II in 1945. So a few years later, the club was formed, and it's been so, so generous to Everett veterans and the Everett Veterans Office. I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think Councilman Matusky would like to present his citation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank the Veterans Commissioner, Cristiano, also for being here to recognize this organization. I became a member, I think it's 20 years now. Time does fly, boy. And, you know, years ago, we had the VFW, the American Legion, the Italian-American veterans, the Jewish-American veterans, the Yalks Club right up the street. There was only a few fraternal organizations left in this community. And the Chavo Club has really picked up the pace on their commitment to this community. As a matter of fact, they allowed me to have my 40th Halloween party, children's Halloween party at the club. And they're just a wonderful group of people. And, you know, for those who are interested in joining, I know the membership is open. We have a new president, just elected last month, Mr. Joe Regina. Or Signo Regina, better known as Joe Regina. Formerly, Mr. Pendola was our president, and Mr. Augur is our treasurer. And a new member of the Board of Directors is a former city councilman who served up here for many years, Mr. Stevenson Minelli. So it's an organization that people should be interested in joining. As we all know, the Thanksgiving Day dinner, they serve maybe 200 dinners to the seniors in this community. And I would like to give you a proclamation. I heard the mayor was doing one tonight, and I said, well, you know, I told Mr. Mangin, if you can draw one up quick enough, and he did. And I think it's because most of the membership here, Mike Markhazy, he's a former member, I believe. Are you a member still, Mike?
No.
You've got to get your renewal in. Only kidding. But it's a great organization, there's plenty of parking, and they're nice guys, and I'm proud to be a member of this organization. Thank you.
My pleasure. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Millie Marconi, you want to join us? Millie?
I got the check.
You got the check.
You loaded, go in the middle.
Hold on one second, I have the check.
See, a P H N.
Right.
Not you.
He's on TV.
You too.
You too.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
You, you twirl.
Thank you.
You too.
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 This meeting will come to order. The clerk, please call the roll. First, we have to accept, well, after the call of rolls.
Madam Chairman, motion approved previous minutes of the last meeting.
We haven't. We haven't even. It must be in a hurry.
Want to go, huh? Excited. Counselor Adrian.
Here.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Markhazy.
Yep.
Counselor Martin's.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
And President DeFlorio.
Here.
We have 10 members present. We do have a quorum.
We have 10 members present. We do have a quorum. If the audience could please join us, a salute and a flag.
(Inaudible) to apply in the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as a whole.
If we could all remain standing for a moment, silent. Unfortunately, very sad news that our former fire chief, Dave Butler, has passed away. Our condolences to the entire fire department, the City of Everett, and his family. Before we start the meeting tonight, I do have a few announcements that I want to make from the chair. The first is that if you can't make a committee meeting, it would be greatly appreciated if you could call or text me at a certain time, because I can stand in as the president at any committee meetings, but I have to come from Boston. So I need heads up. So if at 4 o'clock, you know you're not going to make that committee meeting, or you think you're not able to make that committee meeting, please text me and let our administrative assistants, Mike Mangin, know that you're not able to make it. Number one. Number two, we've, I've had a few complaints about electronic devices. Unfortunately, when the mic is on, they can hear the clicking. And when we're speaking to the, if anybody is speaking, asking questions to any department heads, all they can hear is that click going on. So I don't know if we have a problem with the mics, if we can correct that in the future, but until that's corrected, if the mics are on, please refrain from using your devices during our meetings. We do also have a meeting on electronic devices that are prohibited on council rule, item number 52. If you could please follow that, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve the previous meetings of the last meeting.
I have a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
If the motion...
Clerk.
Do you take item number two from the agenda or participation?
No, I'm sorry, public participa...
Oh, public participation.
I have a motion to take public participation. I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I do have one sign in, Mr. Craig Harden. Is it Craig Harden?
Hello, Craig Hardy, 14 Englewood Ave, Everett, Mass. Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to come in front of this council and thank the council number one for honoring Chief Butler the way we did today and yesterday. I know everyone was pretty much out of services here in the council. I'd also like to thank Mayor Carlo Di Maria and his wife. I know they were present today at the funeral. Like to thank the Everett Police Department and my department, the Everett Fire Department, for a great send-off. His family was truly grateful, and he did give 39 years to this city, and that's what it's about. This is a strong community. I would just like to thank everyone here for that. That's why I want to speak in front of you. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that, well, we should, anybody else in the audience that would like to join public participation? Please state your name.
Lara Mori. I'm the Human Resources Director for the City of Everett. I just, due to the fact that Agenda Item Number 30 is new business, so I'd be precluded from speaking on it this evening. I would like to address it in a timely fashion, so I thought public participation would be the best place to do so. The concern regarding, I maybe should say what item number 30 is. It's requesting an internal audit to show if there are any pay disparities among the City of Everett's employees, including schools, and to examine all job classifications to see if there are any gender or racial gaps. So I'd like to thank you, Councilwoman, for putting that on the agenda. Your concern shares a lot of sentiment with what the administration, that the administration had when drafting this job description. If I may, I'll quote from some of the essential job functions that were listed in the posting. This person would have a lead role in facilitating the development of strategies, policies, and guidelines that advance understanding of diversity and inclusion issues across the workforce and the community, coordinate with individuals who are overseeing diversity and inclusion efforts within individual divisions, city boards, and commissions, and prepare reports and statistical analyses. As demonstrated by the last bullet, the director of the DEI will be conducting these types of internal audits regarding possible disparate treatment in our city and our schools. Your concern is certainly a valid one, and we thank you for giving us a platform to continue this conversation publicly. We're proud of the strides taken so far and look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on public participation? Hear me none?
Motion to close.
I have a motion to close public participation. I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Take out one to postpone.
I have a motion for item number one to be postponed for...
So let's start with the reader first. I just need a reader first, legally.
Yeah, he's got to read it, yeah.
Item number one is an order offered by Council President Rosa DeFlorio for surplus property, that the Everett City Council hereby declares the following GPW vehicles be considered surplus. It was requested just to postpone it for two weeks.
So moved.
I have a motion to postpone item number one for two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. You have postponed item number one.
Item number two. Madam President, is a communication offered by Rosa DeFlorio as president that is, Honored the mayor request permission to address the city council with regard to Council Markhazy's concern pertaining to campaign finance expenses.
Move to grant such permission and invite the mayor, of course.
On the motion, Counselor Markhazy.
Yes, I believe we still have a meeting for the ninth. We have a committee of the hold the ninth. I'm not prepared to ask the questions that I would be on the night tonight. If this board requests to give the mayor permission to come and speak, all is well. But we did have, we have a meeting for this on the ninth at 6 o'clock, I believe.
If I may, on the motion, I thought we received the questions already at the last meeting. So I'll keep my motion.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you. Whereas this is already scheduled for a meeting on the ninth, I really don't see any reason to bring it up tonight and then bring it up on the ninth, especially where...
I believe it was said that the mayor was unable to make that meeting on the ninth.
Well, maybe we just schedule another night instead of trying to have that discussion on a night where we have a full agenda.
Okay.
That in and of itself should be its own item. So I would concur with my colleague that if that evening isn't convenient, that we just reconvene for another night. We can consult with the man to determine when his schedule is available, and we'll have that meeting. I don't think that this meeting with a full agenda is the proper place to be addressing that.
Okay.
If the, if the...
I have, wait a minute. So one motion is to go forward with this, and the other one is to postpone it. Postpone takes president over anything else.
It's not a point to postpone. Can we set a date tonight and see if it's adequate to have, so we can prepare for that of a committee to hold? That's all I'm asking.
Counselor Capone.
If we could, we can lay this on the table, and then perhaps our clerk could speak with, clerk committees could speak with the mayor to determine what days would work, and then we'll set something up.
The mayor is asking to come up?
I'm not prepared for tonight. I mean, I want to do the whole week.
No, no, not, not...
If you guys take it for granted, you want to do it, you do it. I mean, it doesn't make sense. We have, we have a date set for this, and I'm not prepared for it.
This tonight, or the night, so...
Lay it on the table.
So...
I think he's just looking to address the council, not to go through this.
This is not, this is a communication from the mayor's office. Communication in the mayor's office takes precedence. We have a communication. Would you like to give it to me?
Take a motion and invite the mayor up, please.
Do I have a, I have a motion to invite the mayor up, and I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you. This is a communication from the mayor's office. I would invite Attorney Papalardo to come up before you and present to you. Make a motion to invite the, thank you, Mr. Thank you.
Who will we invite up?
Attorney.
They were supposed to come in the hall.
Yeah.
On a communication.
Yeah. That's not a communication.
Wait a minute.
That's fine. Whatever you want to say.
It's not a communication. It's not a...
They were invited.
We have given one of those, it's not a communication. It's still, still, we'll have the committee as a whole, so we have...
So we're still going to have the committee as a whole, is what we're saying, Mr. Mayor, and we can invite anybody up that you want, but we're still going to have the committee as a whole?
Fine.
Okay. You...
I'll note you.
Please state your name, off of the record.
Sorry, what's it? Should he ask me a question, then I'll get your question?
Madam President, members of the council, my name is John Papalardo. With me is Emily Bryan. We are attorneys from the law firm of Greenberg Toreg. And we are here to address the agenda item that was number two for tonight's meeting. May we proceed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Since 2016, we have been privileged to represent Carlo Di Maria in connection with matters related to his political future. For some time, Carlo Di Maria has been the subject of demonstrably false and untrue allegations specifically related to the performance of his official duties as mayor. Greenberg Toreg has been engaged to enhance his political future by addressing these scurrilous and unfounded attacks which are designed to mislead the public and impugn the mayor's integrity and reputation. These salacious and baseless attacks are not only designed to be detrimental to the mayor, but also have a pernicious impact on the City of Everett. The attacks take the form of false and misleading press coverage, social media, and anonymous flyers. I can provide a few examples. Before I do, I would be happy to entertain questions and elaborate to the extent that I can. I can in connection with anything that you might want, uh, to discuss.
Counselor, my colleagues are not ready to give you questions tonight, so this is only communications that were taken from the mayor. And then, I guess, when we go to, uh, committee as a whole, then you can answer any questions at that time. But this is only a communication right now.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
There were questions that were submitted to the public two weeks ago, um, that everyone on this body received. Um, I think those questions would be fine to answer if the attorneys would like to. They were submitted for the public two weeks ago.
There were, there were questions submitted to the public? And how many questions of those, Counselor?
They were read in public and they were delivered to each member of this body two weeks ago.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, with all due respect to our guests, I appreciate that they're here. We have this set up for committee of the whole. Are we going to go through this all tonight and then do it again? We have a full agenda here, a, a night of business to take care of. We have a colleague who is the sponsor and he's not prepared. And just because a handful of questions were put together, doesn't mean that's all the questions that this entire body has. I expected March 9th. I focused on tonight's agenda. I didn't focus on this piece. So, if they want to answer any questions, that's fine. But rather than do this twice, I would rather just do this once. So, again, I'm going to ask that we lay this on the table and then we line up a date that works for everyone so that before we leave this chamber, everybody knows what the date is and then we'll address it at that time. I don't see the, the purpose of doing this twice.
Okay. Counselor Masuski.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, we just found out just a few minutes ago that March 9th, is that the date of the supposedly committee of the whole that the mayor can't attend?
I'm not 100% sure on that. You, I can ask him that question.
So, when were we going to find out? Tonight that that meeting was canceled, the committee of the whole? So, these people are here and if we can limit this to a certain time, uh, to address just what's on there that was, uh, listed at the last council meeting and get this moving forward, uh, I don't see a problem with that.
So, basically what you're saying, ask the questions that are there now, but counselors, you can ask the questions, but I just want you to know that some counselors do have further questions and still have to be at a committee as a whole.
Well, you have to plan a new, uh-
Well, whatever, whatever committee, the counselors, yeah.
Well, we're just finding so tonight. This is a problem, uh, with, with this council. The, the mayor's not going to be able to attend that meeting. He just said that. And you want the mayor, the resolution states that the mayor appear on the ninth.
Yeah.
And now, we just found out the mayor cannot attend that meeting. Well, see, you know, you're just changing things around. I'm here to get things done. If these people are here, these attorneys, and, and move forward with this tonight, I don't have a problem with that. I'm not the sponsor for this piece, but you know, I know you are. But, uh, the ninth can't be done, so, uh, they're here tonight. Now, I just got my calendar, uh, Saturday, so I didn't even know this was on the agenda, so, I mean-
Okay, well, we, we've already invited the guests up, so let's, wait, I'm not going to go back and forth. Let's have them answer the questions.
I think that would be a fair thing to do, where they are here tonight.
And then we, you could continue. You could-
Madam Chairman, can I make a comment?
We set aside an hour-
Madam Chairman, can I make a comment?
We're going to do it now.
Madam Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
For the last six years, I've endured Councilman Marquez's Facebook posts-
Let's not use any names, please.
No. He, he, he attack, yeah, y'all, Chris. He attacks, constantly attacks me on social media, in the public, in the newspaper, the Everett Leader Herald. In the Everett Leader Herald, at-
Okay, I'm going to request for a 10-minute recess if this is going to continue.
Why is it 10-minute recess? We don't need a recess. Mr. Papalardo is here to, to answer the deflamatory comments that have been made in the newspapers week after week. What is the mayor trying to hide? I'll tell you what is going on and why he, why he is with me tonight. I mean, this is a, a game being played by a certain few people here.
Now, I was, I was, I was at a council, you still-
Okay, all right, let's, let's, uh, all right.
It's not a communication, it's not a communication.
Come up the night of and say, I can't make it.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Are you going to be able to make the March 9th meeting? If this continues?
We, Mr. Papalardo's not in the country that day.
Okay.
But he's prepared to make a statement tonight.
So, let him make a statement.
Yeah.
I'm going to let him make a statement and, and after that-
Don't tell me that the com- questions that Councilman Marquez or anyone else here, uh, that they don't have their questions. They've, they've asked those questions in the paper. Paul the Everett Leader Herald, and he asks the questions, what is the mayor trying to hide? Why does he have his attorney? Why is he spending all this money? Is he under investigation? Is he, is he, uh, under indictment? Talking about the proffer agreement? He's here to tell you.
Why don't you answer it?
He's here to tell you.
Why don't you answer it?
All right, Counselor, order. No cross debating. Let's continue.
So, let, let him speak. That's what he's here for.
Okay, I am prepared, I am prepared to address, uh, your questions and your concerns. These aren't questions. What are the payments? Do you want me to proceed with this or do you want me to explain to you what's going on?
Whatever the board would like. Uh, Counselor Masuski, what would you like?
Well, I think, uh, the attorneys here, go based on what you can make out of the, uh, resolution at the last meeting, maybe that would be the way to go. And what, wh- why are you getting paid? That's what the councilman wants to know. Okay, as I indicated to you, as I indicated to you previously, I explained to you what we were doing here. I explained to you why we were being paid. I will repeat. The mayor has been the subject of demonstrably false and untrue allegations specifically related to the performance of his official duties as mayor. We have been engaged to enhance his political future by addressing these scurrilous and unfounded attacks which are designed to mislead the public and impugn the mayor's integrity and reputation. These attacks are not only solicitous and baseless and not only designed to be detrimental to the mayor, but also have a demonstrably pernicious effect and impact on the City of Everett. The attacks have taken place over a four-year period and perhaps before. I've only been involved for four years. Uh, I can, I could provide a couple of examples and hopefully by providing these examples and discussing them, uh, I will cover some of the questions that are in this, uh, in the sheet. The mayor has been unfairly and inaccurately portrayed as a snitch and an FBI informant. All of these allegations are completely untrue and without foundation. The purported basis of this is that there was a proffer agreement that was entered into by the mayor. Anybody who extrapolates from a proffer agreement into the idea that he's providing information or is a snitch for the FBI doesn't understand either the criminal law or the way the criminal justice system works. If you are an individual and the government is conducting an investigation and the government wants to hear from you, you have two choices. You either talk to them or say you don't want to talk to them. People who have nothing to hide, people who are innocent of wrongdoing, people who are not behind or have any agendas and have done nothing wrong will talk. When they talk, they sign proffer agreements. The fact that you sign a proffer agreement has no legal import other than to say that nothing you say can ever be used against you as long as it's truthful. Who determines whether it's truthful? The government determines it's truthful. On the other hand, people who have something to hide don't talk. What do they do? They invoke their constitutional privilege against self-incrimination. If you've done something wrong, you don't talk. If you haven't, then you talk. And that's particularly true if you are holding a public office. There is nothing sinister, there is nothing unusual, there is nothing that is in any fashion, uh, extrapolating about a proffer agreement. It's done every day of the week. I'm sure that people in this room have engaged in proffer sessions. It's done any lawyer, and by the way, I wasn't Mr. Di Maria's lawyer in 2013, but any lawyer who practices in this arena would require a proffer agreement. Why? Because it, it provides an ability to set the ground rules for a meeting with the FBI and a meeting with the prosecutor's office. That's what was done here. Let me tell you what wasn't done here. Okay? In any meeting that took place, information passed. That information was very clear. That information was accepted by the government as being completely true. What does that mean? It means that if it wasn't true, he would have been indicted for perjury. If it wasn't true, he would have been indicted for false statements to the FBI. It was accepted by the government, it was true. That was the end of it. He didn't hide behind the Fifth Amendment. He told them what they wanted to know, just like tens of, at least 50 people that I'm familiar with in retrospect who were spoken to by the FBI, who had proffer agreements, did the same thing. Is he a witness for the FBI? No. Was he ever a witness in a criminal case? No. There've been criminal cases. There've been criminal cases about the subject matter of this case. Was he a witness? No. Was he charged? No. Is he an informant? No. It's fairly clear. In fact, it couldn't be clearer. Couple of other things that have been said. Oh, this proffer agreement goes on forever. It can last 25 years. Hogwash. Any proffer agreement that is entered into by the United States government in connection with an investigation lasts for that day and that day only. If you go before the government again, they execute a new proffer agreement. It lasts for a day. And what is determined by that agreement is, one, is what you're saying truthful? And, two, if it's truthful, that's the end of it. And by the way, people who have nothing to hide and talk to the FBI do this all the time. It's very, very simple. So, on one hand, he's been portrayed as an FBI informant. I've been in this case since 2016. I've had one conversation with the government, one. That conversation was, I represent Carlo Di Maria. If you have any questions, call me. I'm still waiting for the call. Hopefully, that'll address the issue of whether or not, whether or not Mr. Di Maria, Mayor Di Maria, is an informant. Secondly, we read about, and we've read reams of information about Kickback Carlo. He's an informant. But wait a second, no, 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 he's a crook. He takes money. He takes money in connection with his official duties. So, let's call him Kickback Carlo. Absolutely, completely untrue. Has he ever been charged with a crime? Is there even an investigation? I suggest to you the answer is no. There was an investigation in 2013. The investigation resulted in the charging of various individuals. That case went to federal court. Those individuals were found not guilty. Was Carlo Di Maria mentioned? Much less, what, did he testify? The answer is no. He had nothing to do with that. So, he's now Kickback Carlo for what? For what? I can tell you for what. He's been the subject of patently false reports that he's involved in a civil suit connected with the casino. Is anybody here familiar with the civil suit? Well, let me give you some highlights of the civil suit. A complaint was filed in 2018, September of 2018, relating to events involving the casino. In connection with that complaint, was Carlo Di Maria charged with anything in the civil suit by a private lit- litigant? The answer is no. Was his name even mentioned in connection with that civil suit? The answer is no. But let me tell you what did happen. The case was before then-Chief Judge Patty Saris in federal court in Boston. She questioned the validity of that civil suit. She questioned the bona fides of that civil suit. Again, not relating, having anything to do with, with the mayor of Everett. She said she was inclined to dismiss that civil suit. So, what happened? In February of 2019, an amended complaint was filed in connection with that civil suit. Again, the mayor wasn't a defendant in that case. He had no opportunity to defend himself. But, was he mentioned? Absolutely. Because unfounded, unsubstantiated, unsupported, unmeritorious accusations were made in that civil suit. What happened? In November of this year, the same judge looked at that civil suit and said, even though all of these allegations that are made, conversations that he, that the mayor may have had, things that he may have done or was accused of doing without, again, any evidence to support any of it, even if it were true, let me take it as true and let me assess the quality of your civil suit. What did she do? Taking all of those allegations to be facially accurate, when she conceded that they weren't because there was no evidence to support them, taking them as true, she then dismissed the case with prejudice, meaning the case can't be brought again. So, not only wasn't he named in the suit, even accepting everything there to be true, she threw the case out of court, never to be brought back. Now, what's the import of that? Lawyers, you, people in this room are lawyers. You understand that the burden of proof in a civil suit is not high. In fact, it's very low. It's a preponderance of the evidence. More probable than not is all you have to prove. And in this case, they couldn't even sustain a complaint that passed a prima facie case, accepting the untruths to even be true. But what does that mean? When you're talking about Kickback Carlo, okay? When you're talking about activities of the mayor, what it means is this. If there's no civil cause of action where the preponderance of evidence is the standard, more probable than not, something more than 50%, what about a criminal case? Where you have to show guilt beyond a reasonable doubt? The standard in a criminal case is substantially and exponentially higher. If you can't make a civil case because it doesn't exist, how can you make a criminal case? And by the way, do you really think that the United States Attorney in Massachusetts is a shrinking violet? Do you really think that if there was a case there, he wouldn't bring it? Do you really think that he could ever be accused for being anything less than very aggressive? I suggest not. He's extremely aggressive. He's nationally known for being aggressive. He's nationally known for bringing cases. He brings cases and loses them even if he thinks it's right to bring the case. No case has been brought against Carlo Di Maria. Carlo Di Maria has never testified in a case, civil or criminal. But what do we have? We have newspaper accounts- We have newspaper accounts that say, "Well, let's talk about this conversation that I had with Carlo Di Maria," in quotes, going back and forth about improper activity. Oh, by the way, at the end of the newspaper article, it says, "This is only a satire." How many people read to the end to find out it was a satire and didn't exist? Not once, but more than once. Okay? How about this civil case I just talked about? How about that, when it was dismissed on November 15th of 2019? But what happens? Flyers are sent to homes for people who live in Everett. Those flyers say that he's under investigation in a civil case. You mean the same case that was dismissed in November? No idea? Well, I do have an idea, and that's what it is.
Obviously, that's pretty clear, so it shouldn't be any more monologues. That's what you tell us.
Okay? Well, wait a second, is that a question?
Yes, it is.
Would you like me to answer that question? Okay. Let me direct your attention to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 55, Section 6. Are you familiar with that?
No.
Okay. Let me suggest that you could look it up. And what it says is that a public official is permitted to have lawyers to address exactly what I said we were doing.
What are you doing?
Would you like me to repeat that again?
No, I wouldn't like to. I don't want to ask you any questions.
What we are doing is that we are dealing with matters relating to Mr. Di Maria, Mayor Di Maria's political future. Okay? And in connection with that, we're addressing issues that had been raised because of demonstrably false and untrue allegations specifically related to his performance of his official duties as mayor, all permitted by the Massachusetts General Laws. Okay? Particularly with, particularly in connection with the discharge of his official duties. This has nothing to do with a mayor or a public official walking down the street and punching somebody in the nose. That's a personal allegation. That's a personal cause of action. What it has to do with is criticism which is untrue, unfounded, and completely specious that deals specifically with the discharge of his duties as mayor. Let's go through some of these questions. You need to know, what are the payments to attorneys being paid from the mayor's campaign account? I just told you, three times. Are they for personal issues, not allowed by the law? The answer to that is no. If this is the case, then he needs to tell us what it is, please. I've already done that. The people need to know. Is that a question? I'm here to tell the people what this is about. Is he involved in an ongoing investigation? No. What did I just say? Is he an informant for the FBI? How can you be an informant and the target of an investigation at the same time? He's been accused of both.
About 2013, and yet I spoke with him. Is that 2012?
In 2013, he, along with 55 others, were asked questions by the FBI. If you're asked questions by the FBI, does that mean you've done something wrong? If you have, you don't answer them.
We're asking you the question. We don't know.
In 2013, he was asked questions by the FBI, along with a lot of other people who signed proffer agreements. He provided truthful and complete responses to those questions. The government had no problem with what he said.
Then that's the answer. He gave us the answer. We're asking you the questions. Just give us the answer. That's all we're looking for.
That's the answer.
We're just in a court. We're just asking you questions.
That's the answer. Why is he spending so much money for criminal attorney representation? What part of "I said" relates to criminal attorney representation?
We don't know. We asked.
I just told you, none.
Didn't we take your word on it, I guess, right?
My colleagues, every one of us, should know what these criminal attorney payments are for. I am an attorney. I've been an attorney for 45 years. I'm the senior partner of a very, very large international law firm. I am not here in connection with a criminal case. Let me also suggest something. $200,000, there's a question here. More than $200,000 has been written from his campaign account for legal. I don't know what his campaign account deals with as far as legal. I can tell you what we do. Okay? And if this were a criminal case, I occasionally handle criminal cases. When I handle a criminal case, I've not handled a criminal case in federal court where the fees have been less than $2, $3 million, in over a nine-month period, not over a four-year period. $200,000 is not that much money. If it were a criminal case, it would be incredibly more expensive, and it isn't. What legal? The mayor should tell us. I just told you. These aren't questions. This is why I'm asking that the mayor appear before a committee of a whole hearing as soon as possible to inform us if he has nothing to hide or to worry about. We have nothing to hide or worry about the city's leaders. You have nothing to worry about the mayor. I can't say the same for others. I can speak to the mayor and to speak to his legal representation. Any other questions?
Counselor, I do have, counselors that want to ask questions. Counselor Hanlon, you're going to put your hand up. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Counselor Martins.
No, never mind. Never mind.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through to our guests. So I'm just, I understand why you're here. I'm just a little frustrated that at the last second, that we're being accosted as if we're doing something wrong. The idea was, this was already set up for a meeting on March 9th. We find out tonight that the mayor's not available, or you're not available on March 9th. I thought we could have very easily rescheduled, but apparently my colleagues wanted to hear this evening. I think we should still have that meeting. Are you willing to make yourself available for another meeting down the road? You should have to check with your client and see if he's interested in paying for that.
Well, I will be happy to check with the client. I am not available, I am out of the country next week. I am not available on March 9th. I may be available later on in March. Having said that, I doubt very much that anything that I have said tonight is going to change either in substance or in form between now and the next meeting that you have. And by the way, for the, you know, just so that you understand, I was told that this was an agenda item for this evening. I changed my schedule to be in Massachusetts today for this meeting. I'm hearing for the first time, it was on an agenda item. I have the agenda. It's right here.
Yep.
So this is not a personal attack. I'm making statements that are very clear, they're unequivocal, and if you have questions about what I've said, I am happy to answer them.
Yep.
And happy to answer them now.
And I appreciate that. And I'm sorry that you were misinformed that it was an agenda item of full impact. We had already had something set up for another date. So the appearance of counsel is a very big surprise to this body. You read the agenda, and it says, "The mayor requests permission to address the city council." That could be a letter. I figured it was going to be a quick statement. I didn't know he was coming with counsel to answer questions. I haven't drafted my questions, but I can ask you a few while you're here.
Sure.
The first thing that you have to understand, I know you're defending your client, that's your job, and in terms of whether things are in a newspaper, or whether things are said, whether it's social media or whatever it is, the bottom line is the concern of this body, I'll speak for myself, the concern as an elected official, is if information is put out there, we have a responsibility to the community. Now, there may be nothing to this whatsoever, and I would sincerely hope that that's the case. But the reality is, as an elected official, if news becomes apparent, or there's an issue that's raised, we have a responsibility and obligation to address that. Now, a proffer agreement, I know what you're saying, but the reality is, most people don't understand fully what a proffer agreement is. A proffer agreement is only in the realm of a criminal matter. And in order to get a proffer agreement, you either need to be a criminal defendant or you need to be under investigation.
Absolutely untrue. That's absolutely untrue.
So that's my understanding, so...
That understanding is incorrect.
Okay. So if you have a proffer agreement at a minimum, let's take all that and put it out the window. At a minimum, the federal government has a very keen interest in speaking to you. Otherwise, they're not going to give you an agreement. They're not even going to come knocking on your door. If they want to talk to you, that's a pretty significant issue. I don't know if anybody here has ever had the FBI knock on their door and say, "The U.S. Attorney's Office wants to talk to you." I fortunately have never had that experience. I hope I never do. But the reality is, it's a pretty significant issue. So if you hear proffer agreement, you want clarification. There's got to be a reason why the government wants to speak to someone. Now, any kind of an individual, it would raise a concern. Any elected official, absolutely, that concern gets heightened. When you're the mayor of a community, that concern should go through the roof. Okay? There may be absolutely nothing to it. And again, we all hope that there isn't. But the obligation is, as an elected official, you have to look into it.
Okay. Let me address two of your points.
Yep.
Okay? The first one, you talk about your obligation as an elected official to get to the bottom of certain allegations.
To at least address it. I didn't say get to the bottom.
I suggest to you, as an elected official, that you also have an obligation to look at the source of the information and determine whether or not that information has any merit, has any foundation, has any kind of basis to it, to determine how you should react. The nature, the nature of the source and the nature of the information should be a consideration in how you address things. As far as a proffer agreement is concerned, if you're familiar with any investigation, forget about the FBI, just talk about the police or government, okay? Allegations take place. Information goes to the government from a whole bunch of different sources. Okay? Sometimes it can be, sometimes it can be a witness to something. Sometimes it could be somebody who's trying to divert attention from themselves and put it on to other people. Sometimes it could be individuals who have an unrelated problem, like a tax problem. But let me tell you, let me tell you how it, let me tell you what I can do for you. The whole Varsity Blues case, the whole college admissions case, the entire case, you know how that came about? Let me explain to you how it came about. Okay? That case came about because an individual who was jammed up completely, caught dead to rights in connection with a stock fraud case, said to the government, "By the way, would you be interested in knowing that I had to pay off to get my daughter into Yale?"
Yeah.
Okay? Completely unrelated to anything. All I'm trying to say is...
I appreciate that, but let's stay with, yeah, let's stay with this issue.
This is this issue. This is exactly this issue. At the time, let me just finish.
The concern we have is, why would the U.S. Attorney's Office want to speak with the mayor?
And I'm explaining that to you.
Okay, let's get to it.
That's exactly what I'm doing. When an investigation is underway, and in this case, and in this case, the investigation was one that involved a whole host of different things. It involved public officials in different cities. It involved Teamsters. It involved all kinds of things. There were many people who were spoken to. The government wants to speak to determine whether there's validity to assertions made by people. They want to do reality checks. It happens all the time. Many of those people, in fact, the vast majority of them, like your mayor, are innocent of any wrongdoing. They talk to them. They talk to them. They determine whether what they have to say is truthful. If it's truthful, that's the end. And by the way, what is said doesn't necessarily have to be evidence of any kind of wrongdoing, much less criminal activity. It could be, it could be, was this person at a certain place at a certain time for a council meeting? It could be as simple as that, and oftentimes is, as were many of the other people that were spoken to in connection with that investigation. There's nothing sinister about a proffer agreement. Absolutely nothing sinister. There's nothing, there's nothing that is problematic about that. I suggest to you again, that if there's a problem, if somebody has an issue, a personal issue or a professional issue, that person, on advice of counsel, would never talk to the FBI. Why? Because they have something to hide. They wouldn't expose themselves. But somebody who doesn't, obviously does.
Okay. So we have a proffer.
Yep.
And are you saying that the proffer did exist?
I'm saying that there was a proffer agreement.
Okay. It predated you. It predated you. I get that.
I was not there.
Right.
Okay? My understanding, and I'm basing this, I'm telling you based upon my understanding. My understanding is that there was a proffer agreement. My understanding is that there were, at least, there were many, many people who signed proffer agreements, provided information to the FBI, all of whom, all of whom were not involved in any of this.
Okay. And I know this predates you, so it might make it a little more difficult, but what was the particular topic? What did they want to know from our mayor? That's our concern.
Particular topic?
Yeah.
My, this is, this is an educated guess on my part.
Okay.
The particular topic had to do with the land that formed the basis of the casino. And the reason why I'm answering the question in that form is because individuals were charged with crimes relating to the acquisition or hidden interests in land. Okay? They were charged with federal crimes. They went to trial for those federal crimes. By the way, they were found not guilty. But more important, more important in connection with that, was, was the mayor a witness in that case? No. Did he have anything to do with that case? The case that finally went to trial? No. Did he even come up? No. That, that in and of itself, I suggest to any rational observer would be dispositive of what involvement the mayor had with that case, also known as none.
I guess part of the problem is that it's an educated guess on your part, as opposed to being actively involved at the time.
It's not an educated guess...
I don't want to debate it.
Wait a second. It's not a debate. It's not an educated guess that he wasn't a witness. It's not an educated guess that his name didn't come up.
Well, that's fine. If you're saying that this predated you, and it was an educated guess on what they wanted to speak to him about.
Well, you asked me, I wasn't present for the proffer.
Exactly. Exactly. So...
But I do know the government accepted everything that was said.
So part of the problem that we have is if you weren't there, I don't know if you can speak to this, is it an educated guess on your part that the mayor was not the subject of investigation at that time?
Absolutely. Counselor, can I suggest something to you? What was the date of the proffer agreement?
We saw it through the newspaper.
You had it. It was in the paper. So accepting the paper to be accurate, it was 2016.
It was the end of 2013.
I'm sorry, 2013.
December sometime.
What's the date right now?
We're in 2020.
Right. Right. 2013, also known as seven years ago. Do you know what the statute of limitations is for criminal conduct?
Was it six?
Five years.
Okay.
Okay? And nothing happened in 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. I can, I think I can reasonably tell you that there is no concern here.
Okay.
Based upon all of the objective criteria that I've discussed.
Yeah. Okay, good. And so we see payments for legal fees.
Yes.
And you're saying that was to enhance the mayor's political future?
And it continues.
Okay. So are any of these fees to defend ongoing claims?
Ongoing what?
Or just any kind of a claim? Are these claims, or is it just...
The mayor is not involved in a criminal case?
Any civil claims?
The mayor is not involved in a civil case? I made that pretty clear.
Okay. So what is the total amount that he's paid your office?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I could look it up.
What is the hourly rate sitting at this table right now?
The hourly rate at this table?
The combined hourly rate.
I am not certain. My fees are very high.
Okay. What's your hourly rate?
I have, my lowest fee is $1,650 an hour.
An hour. Okay. And how about your associate to your right?
I'm not sure. $5.50.
Okay. So we have over $2,100 an hour sitting in front of us.
Right.
And if your function is to enhance the mayor's political future, and it's got nothing to do with legal representation, wouldn't he be better off with public relations?
Wait a second. I didn't say it had nothing to do with legal representation.
So...
I'm representing the mayor. He's my client.
... they want. So that's the bottom line. It would make more sense to me that if he's worrying about reputation or political enhancement, It would make more sense to me that if he's worrying about reputation or political enhancement, that perhaps a PR firm would be a little bit more affordable of an option. What I would say is, I, and again, your client would have to do this, but perhaps to ease the concern of this council, you make the invoices available. Would he be willing to do that?
Make the invoices available?
Invoices for your services available.
I'll talk to him about it.
Okay.
The invoices, the invoices for my services are fairly clear.
Okay. And, uh, so, at that point, I have no other questions at this point, but, you know, this, this is questions off the top of my head without any notice whatsoever, we're even going to discuss this this evening. So, uh, you know, I, we'll leave it up to my colleagues. I appreciate your candor. I appreciate you being here. And if my colleagues are so inclined to meet another time, we'll send an invitation and see if it's accepted.
That's fine. And let me suggest to you one other thing, which is, I don't tell my client what to do in terms of other representation or alternative methods. I do know that he's very interested in pursuing legal recourse against people who have engaged in a pattern of conduct over many years to lie, to cheat, to misrepresent, and clearly malign his position as mayor of Everett.
I wouldn't blame him. So, okay. Thank you.
I have one other speaker, Counsel Adrian.
Just want to say thank you for taking the time to come here today and speak to us. I just want to confirm some of the things that you said. So, can you confirm that our mayor has not been in any civil or criminal lawsuits? Is that what you said, or any cases?
Let me be clear in what I said.
Okay.
Okay? The subject matter of this appearance has to do with the amount of money he's paid Greenberg-Torrick. I can only speak to my representation of the mayor. And I can tell you that I am unaware of any, we're certainly not representing him in any criminal case. We're certainly not representing him in connection with any ongoing civil matter. There is none that I'm aware of. But I don't know, I don't know about other things. I only know what we represent him on. I thought that was the gravamen of this evening's discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two more questions.
Sure.
So, the mayor is still paying for your services in part of protecting his reputation? Because there's no more investigations going on? Because the case you referred to wasn't, you said there was a verdict of not guilty. So, right now...
Verdict of not guilty, I think, was 2014, 2015?
Yeah. No, I'm familiar with the case.
I was engaged, it might have been a little bit later, I'm not sure. I really don't know, because I wasn't involved in that case. I can tell you there was a verdict of not guilty in connection with those who were charged as it related to the, to the site of the, of the casino.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
I can tell you that everybody was found not guilty, and there was no further, there were no further charges brought against anybody. I can tell you that there had been all kinds of allegations that were unfounded that have taken place between now and going back five years, or certainly back to 2016, when, when I was asked to represent the mayor, including a, an obviously specious civil suit, which is now no longer present. That's what I know.
So, right now, there's no investigation that you are...
As far as I know, I'm not representing him in connection with anything like that.
So, you're only representing right now just to protect his reputation?
I'm representing him pursuant to the dictates of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 55, which, which allows me to represent him as it relates to matters pertaining to the discharge of his official duties as mayor of Everett.
He said the ma...
And by the way, I wouldn't necessarily assume that there isn't other recourse here. And by that, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily assume that there aren't other possibilities in terms of how his legal fees could be paid.
Ah, that's a good point.
I'd just throw that out.
Counsel Adrian, you still have the floor? Wait a minute, I want to make sure that...
Yeah, I don't know if that helps you, but...
As I indicated to everybody before, these allegations not only are attacking the mayor, but they also have an impact on the city of Everett.
Are you saying that the fees are also helping to protect the city of Everett?
That's all I said.
Because the city, oh, okay. Because I thought the city solicitor's job was that.
I said there may be alternative sources of funding for legal fees.
Other sources, not his campaign funds.
Correct.
So, he could be paying personally.
He could be paying personally? The city of Everett could be paying. That's what I'm saying. That's a possibility.
The city of Everett could be paying for your fees? So...
I don't know. Let me suggest to you that that has happened in connection with other matters of a very similar nature. You're welcome.
Counsel Haaland, did you...
I was going to ask the question, but the gentleman just answered my question. So that there were more than one avenue that the mayor has been looking at for legal support. That's exactly what he said. And I, that's all I want, my questions.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, we can excuse with the, have you have any other questions? I want to make sure everybody speaks first, before I call on Counsel Capone for the second time. Counsel Matuski.
I just have one que, by the way, Attorney Papalatto, is that how you pronounce your name?
Yes.
Well, after your presentation, I can see why you get your hourly wage. You're very impressive. And I haven't heard from your assistant, but...
She's much better. You think I'm kidding?
No, I can tell. But I got to say, I'm very impressed. I think the city of Everett, you know, the casino is new. Everett's a very different political place than you've ever, you probably know about our superintendent and the way things were done. Well, maybe you don't. But I've been in office for quite a few years, and it's a very difficult place to campaign and stay in office, but I've been very fortunate. If they can't beat you in Everett, they slander you. And it's a very difficult place. And I just want to let you know, I've been, I got elected when I was 20, and I'm still here, still in business. And I was a state rep here also. And it was one of the dirtiest campaigns in the history of this community, and they survived it. But let me just say this. If, if the mayor was to hire you through city funds, that would come before the city council, I'm sure, no? No? Okay. I, you know, I'm just saying. But I got to say, I've been around a long time. You were very impressive, Mr. Papalatto. Thank you.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Throw you to our guest. I just want to be clear about that one comment that was stated as far as different avenues. I'll, I'll wait for you to finish talking.
I'm sorry.
Yep, that's fine. I just want to be clear about the statement you had mentioned about various avenues of funding. Have you received, I, I just want to make sure that you, your office hasn't received any funds from the city in any matter relating to this, have they?
No. My comments were very general in nature.
Okay.
I am not worried about my bill is being paid.
Okay.
And I'm...
I'm, I'm just concerned that it's not city money that's being used.
Well, all I'm saying is that there's a possibility, and it's, this isn't up to me to decide.
Okay.
Much less to advise on, you have lawyers in the city that do that. But other cities have been, other cities have actually paid for lawyers for very, very similar types of representations.
Okay. But with regards to this, I, I don't care about other communities. I just care about this community. Has any funds from the city of Everett been used to pay your fees?
To my knowledge, no. To my knowledge, no. But that doesn't mean that there isn't exposure there. That's my only point.
Okay. No, and that's fine. I just wanted clarification on that point. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No further questions? Excuse with the customary thanks? Do I have to add a motion?
Just a second.
Thank you for appearing.
Thank you.
You're excused.
I believe we, are we agreeable to having another meeting, or is everybody satisfied with tonight? So, the first motion I'd like to make is, is there a, a, a majority of people that would like another meeting?
Counsel, it's your piece.
That's my piece. We, we're trying to find a date, so, do we refer it back and, do we get a proper date? When everybody's...
Do you feel your answer, your questions were answered, or do you need more questions?
Well, I have more questions.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if everybody here has more questions.
This, this piece is the mayor's piece. That's a communication piece.
Yes, it is.
So, we're going to refer this back to the mayor.
Yes, we are.
Accept it and place it on file.
So, the motion is...
So, in order, if you want...
So, the motion is to accept the communication, place it on file.
Right.
Second.
And the second part, I don't know if it pertains to communications, is our meeting on the 9th. What do we do about that tonight?
The meeting will have to be canceled, and you can put it back on the agenda again. Is that correct?
You can work with the president and the...
But we cancel it tonight?
No, you, no, because it's not in front of you.
Exactly.
And I'm not sure how to discharge of it without it being on the agenda. Mr. Burley, right? We would, we would do it only if it's on the agenda. So, what you would do is, it's one thing that you can actually do to email...
So, right now, we're going to accept the communication, place it on file.
There's a file, that's...
And the second is, we more or less could have to go...
We're going to go to the March 9th meeting, and then we're going to either postpone it or...
We're going to have to postpone it the night off, the night off, right?
You don't even have to do that, because you don't have to convene, because the chairman, which is the president, working with you and the current committees, can see what time is more beneficial. Just because you've decided that date, we still have to hold it, but we can, we can push it if need be. That's the right of the president.
All right. And I'm going to get a consensus of this group if they want to continue on. So, the move is to make, is to accept the communication, place it on file.
Correct. Right. So, on that motion, I have Counsel DePiero, and then I have Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. The mayor's attorney answered the questions that were raised about expenditures related to campaign finances, which this body has no oversight over. It's governed by the Massachusetts Office of Campaign and Political Finance. I'm not going to sit here idle and allow this body to open itself up to lawsuits. Let's stop allowing a local self-proclaimed newsletter dictate this agenda. Campaigning should be done out on the street. Let's do the job we were elected to do here, conduct the business of the city. Put differences aside, and let's keep moving the city to get forward together. Thank you.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, you know, we got a lot of information tonight, which was great. A little disappointed that this is the way that this came about. There were two things that weren't able to be answered this evening, and it would give me a little more peace of mind. One was the total amount that's been paid to this office. And the second thing is whether or not invoices for services would be made available. So, I don't know if in the interim, we want to put that request to the mayor's office, and then maybe the information that's retrieved from there, maybe it puts the whole committee of the whole to rest, because we did get a lot of answers tonight. Again, wasn't everything that I was prepared to say, because I haven't even dug into it. I dug in for tonight. I didn't dig in for March 9th. But the reality is, the, the overriding concern is that we just have to make sure that not only do things appear above board that they are. And so, I just wanted to know how much we're talking about in invoices for services? And that, and that should cover a lot.
Well, as far as the piece that's in front of us, that's only a communication.
Right.
So, I don't know what other...
So, I mean, I guess the only thing we do is...
So, you can always put anything on the agenda that you would like, uh...
I would say, accept the, accept the communication. Yeah, I would say, accept the communication and request of the mayor that he forward to the council, total amount that was paid, and the invoices for legal fees. Now, he doesn't have to.
Okay.
But it's just a request. And then we can figure out whether or not we need to do a committee of the whole again down the road.
Okay. So, the motion is...
I'll support that. I'll support that also.
I have a second. All right. So, the motion would be to accept the communication.
Place it on file.
Place it on file.
And, Mr. Capone, Counsel?
Ask the mayor.
Yep.
The amount expended and the invoices.
The total amount expended from the office, this office.
And the invoices.
And the invoices for that office.
Yeah, the invoices, yeah.
Okay. I'm just going to write it here.
The thing is, I don't, I don't know if it's, if it's better to lay it over. Lay it over and then have it, and then go from there. Because we have a piece here. So, we could lay this over, get that information, and go from there.
You could just get in in writing, and if everybody is satisfied, you still have the right to discharge.
Madam President, the mayor's indicated he'd like to answer the request by Counsel Capone.
Can I just point out that under the Massachusetts General Laws, all of the payments that are made by a campaign committee go through the Office of Campaign Finance. They're public records. You don't have to go through the charade. They're available to anybody who wants them, somebody on the street.
But invoices are not.
Right. Just like all your ads in the Leader Herald that you pay for are in your campaign finance report, right? That all you pay for? Same thing. It's all, it's, it's there.
So, it's, it's the invoices that we don't have, and we don't have access to. You know, and whether we're entitled to them or not is a different story. But we can at least request it.
Okay. So, the motion is to accept the committee communication and place it on file, and with the request of the invoices. If the mayor chooses not to give them to you, he doesn't have to.
What, what I would say is, place it on file, lay this over, or postpone it to our next meeting.
Postpone it to the next meeting.
To give the mayor an opportunity to respond whether or not he does want to provide those or not. And then we'll go from there. And then we'll go from there.
I'm not going to, I can't go back and forth with this. I have a full agenda.
And this is exactly why this should have been in a committee.
This is the Office of Campaign Finance Report. You disclose your expenditures and your revenues on your reports. You do that every year. I file my electronically. You'll see what I spend my money on.
Are the invoices there, Mr. Mayor? He's requesting, now wait a minute, he's requesting the invoices. You do not have to give them.
Will you give me all your invoices and all the money you spend? You itemize? I don't understand, you want an itemized report? You want to itemize, so instead of saying legal, you want it broken down?
Are we going to debate now?
You want an itemized report on my spending from...
No. Madam President?
All he's asking is for invoices based on...
This is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous.
This whole thing, Counselor Capone, is ridiculous. You've been slaughtering me for the last 12, 14 years, all of you. Not all of you, I'm not going to say all of you, some of you, especially to my Casey family, slaughtering me for years, years.
All right, I'm going to ask a recess.
You know exactly what I'm talking about.
We can leave here for 12 o'clock tonight.
Yeah, we're going to end up. We're going to end up, because we have a full meeting.
I request a 10-minute recess.
You should.
Madam President, we don't need a recess. We don't need a recess, Madam President.
Yeah.
Madam President. Fucking...
Will we convene?
Madam President, I'd like to suspend the rules and take item 17.
We still haven't voted on item 2 yet.
Believe me, I share the sentiment.
Okay, let's make it quick.
Okay. On this one, the motion that I'd be making is to postpone, probably to our next meeting, that would give the mayor an opportunity to respond, with the request that the total amount paid to the law office and invoices for services rendered.
Now, we all understand that he does not have to give us that information.
Absolutely, he does not have to do that.
Okay.
So we're just making an inquiry, if he's willing to turn those over. And the other thing is just to ensure that there were no city funds paid for any legal representation.
I think the attorney was pretty clear about that tonight, but, okay.
So that's the motion.
Wait a minute, do I have a second on that motion? So the motion is to refer this to the, I'm sorry, postpone for two weeks?
Yep.
And have the mayor give us the invoices?
Well, request if he's willing to provide the invoices.
Request the invoices and the amount that he paid to the attorney, and make sure that no city funds were used.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Clerk, we have a sign-in sheet?
Oh, can we suspend the rules and take item number 17?
Second.
Okay. So the motion to suspend rule, take item 17. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Clerk, please read item number 17.
Excuse me, item 17, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counselors Rosa de Florio, Michael McLaughlin, John Hanlon, Jimmy Trylee, and Michael Marchesi, that the Chairman of the Liquor License Commission appear at the next meeting to discuss my businesses in Everett Square, can only sell alcohol until 12:00 a.m.
Okay, so we have the Chairman of the Liquor Commission here, and he's only here to explain why they decided to do this, because I went to the liquor license meeting. So I don't want this to last all night with 100 questions. If you have any further questions, you're going to have to give them to him in writing, according to our charter.
Great. Could we invite the Chairman up?
So the motion would be to invite...
The Chairman.
The Chairman, Mr. Antonelli. To the Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Laurel also from the board?
And anyone else from the board, sure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Philip Antonelli, 65 Windsor Street, Chairman of Everett Licensing Board.
Okay, Mr., I'm sorry.
Filippo Aloro, 68 Dean Street. 68 Dean Street, Member of the Board.
Okay, Mr. Antonelli.
Sorry, just a second. Thank you.
Could you please explain to the board what, why your decision was to roll back the liquor licenses to 12:00 a.m. and not 1:00?
Let's go back. We had in our licenses and regulations that we go by, okay? So Commonwealth of Massachusetts dictates liquor license till 11:00 o'clock. Anything after 11:00 is the decision of the Everett Licensing Board. Currently, there's two of us that sit on the board. We have rules and regulations that every bar and establishment receive. In here on the page six, line out of me, it's, we as a board made a decision that any new or transfer of license for a period of six months would close at 12:00 midnight in a probationary period. And in that six months, up to six months, we've been telling some bars and restaurants three months, but we have it going for six months, that if there's any police reports or any activity, any type of activity that's not in good standing, that we will not push you to 1:00. And we felt, instead of giving a new license or a transfer, a 1:00 license, some of these people, or some of these establishments, I should say, received the license, and they're not closing at 1:00 in the morning. So in good faith, we're asking them to operate six months at the long term, short term, three months, close at 12:00, no police reports. Come back in front of us. We'll have the Everett Police Department there, that's, you know, Sergeant Detective Valsabella and Detective Mike Levy. If they provide us any reports, and there's no reports, then we'll roll them to 1:00. So this isn't just for Everett Square. This is all across the board for the City of Everett. We have establishments in Everett Square, we have establishments in Glendale Square, and this is also for any type of liquor stores also, too. So hopefully that clarifies any questions or concerns that people might have had. I know there was, we had a meeting last week, Counsel Adrian, Counsel de Florio were there. They both had concerns. I think we explained it. They asked us to appear tonight. If you have any other questions, feel free to ask myself or Phil.
Anybody have any questions for Counselor? No other questions, right? I'm trying to call on sponsors first. If the sponsors don't put up their hands, then Counsel Matusky, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President.
I'm just curious, thank you both for being here this evening. I'm not a sponsor of this piece, but I, you know, I wasn't aware, but I kind of like the concept. You know, it's a probation, the three months or six months, depending on what kind of... My concern, you know, and I'm just curious, the Old Taste Garden, I shouldn't say the old, but it's going to be a restaurant and a lounge area, right?
Correct. The Pearl Caribbean it's going to be.
The Pearl Caribbean. And the new one on the corner next to Dempsey's?
Hacienda.
Okay, so they're only open until midnight, is that it?
Correct. So Hacienda's open, they opened, I believe, three weeks ago. The mayor and his team had a grand opening starting from that night up to six months. We told him three months. If you're in good standing, come before us. They need to come back in front of us.
I see.
For the next meeting, whenever that three months, so we'll call it February, let's call it May. But if his, the meeting's not till the end of May, or, and he hasn't completed the three months at least, come before us in June, he has to come back in front of the board and sit with us, and at that point, we'd ask the police department if there's any. Anytime there's a police report generated, they're pretty diligent, they send it up to Annette.
And you weigh the police report.
Absolutely.
You know, sometimes, you know, because I was in the business many years ago, and, you know, sometimes a businessman, by calling the police, now you've got a report.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you get killed either way.
We tell, we tell all establishments that the police are your friends. If you see activity that's not...
But you do end up with a report, and this is why sometimes...
Absolutely, but it's unbecoming that you need the police there. But also, remember, if someone's intoxicated, comes into your establishment, you're responsible for that person, okay? It's one thing to tell them to leave, and if they don't leave, they choose not to leave, you call the police. If you serve them, you're taking responsibility to that patron, and it also falls back to...
Called an unwanted guest.
Absolutely.
I understand that, okay. But you don't hold that against the licensee.
No, it's, sometimes we've had businesses up that had police reports, as we should.
And they called, okay, I just want to make sure.
We read the report, we look at the evidence in the report, what they're saying, and sometimes we just say, okay, we're just addressing the situation.
And the other one in Everett Square that I, it hasn't opened yet since the shooting there, I don't know, three years ago, is it?
There's an, so Brazile Lounge right now currently closes at 11:00. There's an investigation with a grand jury there, the state police, the CPAC unit. Per the state police, we're not, they're operating till 11:00 at night, they can't have that.
So they're open till 11:00?
They've asked to come up in front of us, we've actually explained this to them, Attorney John Mackey represents them.
Okay.
And Everett Police are working with the state police right now, but until this, I say criminal, there is criminal wrongdoing, but until someone is put forth and be in charge with that murder, I believe that, you know, that's what's going to stand. So that's kind of out of our hands.
So this is the new policy, not just for Everett Square, the whole city?
Absolutely.
Okay, I think I...
We've had two establishments on Main Street that we've had till 1:00. They were operating after hours, they're back till midnight. We have establishment on Ferry Street that's closed, another place on this Ferry Street closes at midnight, too. So again, this is widespread, this is not single-handedly saying Everett Square.
And the 810 is open till 1:00?
810's open till 1:00, but to be honest...
There's no problem.
I don't think, there's no problem there, but Richie's, nine out of 10 times, I would say Richie's closed by midnight.
I think I like that policy. Rather than, you know, lose their license for a period of time, where you really, you know, a week or two weeks can put you out of business forever in this business, I think.
Absolutely.
But I think I like that three or six-month probationary period. You prove that you run a good establishment, and then you get rewarded with a 1:00 license.
Sure.
I think that's a great idea.
Sure, one, through you, Mr. Antonelli. I think that you guys do a great job. I've been to a couple of your meetings, and I think you guys are thorough about the fairness of the establishments across the City of Everett. My only question is, so it's three months or six months? Anybody can run a good ramp for three months or six months?
Sure.
What happens after the, so if six months comes by, they do the right thing, you guys award them by giving them the extra hour? Is it a yearly review of their license that, I'm just wondering where that gets reviewed? Because currently, right, if you have a 1:00 a.m. license, and you guys get a few complaints, you guys will bring them before you, and then you'll look at it as a wide package over a year period of time, right? Is that how that works?
It's a year packet, year of time, they, we send out for approvals for renewal in October, they have to have them back up to Annette by middle of November, and work with the fire department, the building department, getting approvals, making sure the establishments are up to code, and then we sign off on them. Police reports, like I spoke about, get generated. I tell everybody this, I'm pretty forthright about it. We're not the Boston Licensing Board, we're an appointed authority, okay, through the mayor's office. We come, we serve two meetings a month, and we do it to the best of our ability. I don't go out at 1:00 in the morning looking to see if X, Y, Z bar is open or closed, nor does Phil, okay? And nothing against the Everett Police Department, because they do a great job, but their focus is not making sure bars or establishments are closed. There are gentlemen that serve on this board with us, are sworn agents of the Licensing Board detectives, that if they're out and about and they see it, they write a report. Some of these establishments get brought up in front of us, because myself, if I'm out working a night job, or Phil's coming home from a late job, and we see this, and we request them up. It's checks and balances, okay? So it, sometimes these places are operating, and we don't even know, and that's not by any stretch of the means there.
Of course.
We're not the Boston Licensing Authority there. You can move your hours from 4:00 at night to 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. So unless we do get a police report, there's no knowledge.
Okay.
Other than that, and if someone does have a police report, we determine if the establishment did the right thing, were they not serving someone that's, you know, an unruly guest, whatever that might be. We'll make a, you know, we're not here to hurt the business, it's progressive discipline. They go on a warning for three months. After that, they lose, you know, a night, two nights, and after that, you can go to, you know, rolling hours back or closing for a week. But there's, you know, I've been here for a fair amount of years. We haven't really closed anybody down, but there's been some bars and establishments that don't, they come up in front of us, they tell us they're going to have a business plan, the business plan's totally not what they say, and they put themselves in jeopardy.
I highly agree.
It's not by us not being pro... It's not by us not being pro-business.
And I was at a meeting recently with you guys. We got an establishment down on Board One of Chelsea Street, and that was sort of the establishment's issue that they had, that they told you a business plan would be presented, and it wasn't. And you guys had to help the neighborhood out, and you did a good job with that. I was just wondering, once you give them the award, is there a yearly renewal period for, uh, reviewing of that, just so that we keep them honest? Be, not honest, but upfront, because anybody can do a good job for three months or six months, and then, okay, I'm gonna give my award by giving the extra hour, and then, you know, and then it's a free-for-all at that point going forward?
Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna just chime in here. We, we don't do an evaluation annually. We like to say, if there's no reports, we expect you're doing a good job.
Sure.
And we move forward, and we hope you do great business. The challenge that we have is when normally, when you have a nuisance, uh, establishment, those are the ones that we actually meet with.
Yep.
And, and deal with. Normally, if a business is doing the right thing and doing a good job, uh, the evaluation is not seeing any reports. And, you know, keep that 1:00 AM license and, you know, make money and prosper. So, that's really what we do. But the only evaluation we do is on the application process, that everything is, um, paid up, your taxes are paid, and there's no police reports. If they are a nuisance, then, as the chairman said, we deal with it face-to-face.
Sure. No, and, and also glad to hear that it's not just Everett Square, that's across the city of Everett, that this new policy has gone into place. I think it's a good policy across the board for everyone, keep everybody honest. If it was zoned, it would be a concern, but it's not. It's across the board. I think it's reasonable, and I think it's fair, and I think that you guys do a good job, and honestly, have done a good job, not just reasonably, but for many years of keeping our liquor establishments up front and, uh, running properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse the question, Mr. Chairman. Second motion?
Uh, Ms. President, Counselor Hamlin?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, just, just to clarify something. First of all, are all liquor establishments serve, do what? They all serve food?
Um, no. Comma Lounge does not serve food. The Hu, the Hookah Bar, he's governed by the Board of Health, 'cause he's selling tobacco. He needs to have 51% of his business.
Okay. So, but those, those, those places have the same hours?
Currently, Comma Lounge is shut down, but he had a 1:00 license. Um, he had an issue, uh, in the square going back three months ago, as we all recall. Um, the patron was outside the, the business, you know, not saying it, the patron was at his business. I don't wanna say that they were the problem, but, uh, there's some issues being resolved there. So, right now, he's not operating.
Okay. And my last question, only need a one-word answer. All liquor establishments are on a three to a six-month, uh, probationary period?
Any new transfer on, any transfer or new licenses?
All, all of them, no matter who.
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to our guests. First of all, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
To be here. I appreciate the courtesy of, of you attending. And first and foremost, let me just say that I've been to plenty of those meetings, and you always conduct yourself professionally and fair. And I know that, uh, there's many reasons why police reports can come into play. And I know that whenever there's been incidences in the past, you take a look at what the actual claim is, what happened, and then you kinda put that in, into the mix. So, the, and I know about the, you know, it's not an annual review. It's exactly like you said. No news is good news. If there's a problem, someone's gonna report the problem, and that's when they come under your purview, and you take a look at it, and see if there's something that could be done to, uh, to help. So, the three to six-month program, how do you decide whether it's three, whether it's six? And could it be any variation in between?
We have it as six months.
Okay.
We're telling, like Hacienda, I'm looking at, uh, and we're going on the offices most likely three months. I don't see...
Okay.
If they have a police report, we're gonna, you know, for some reason, Hacienda, we'll use them right now, 'cause Caribbean Pearl is another one. She unfortunately does not have an occupancy.
Okay.
Currently, so she, you know, when we spoke with her, we told her last week, once you have your license to operate, that's when the time starts.
Okay.
So, Hacienda right now, in three months, I'm gonna request from the police department if there's a police report, any, any police calls. If there's a police report written, it will be sent up to Annette, but I'm gonna have them run a report through the analyst to say, has there any been any calls there for anything, for that matter? Could be someone's drunk, urinating on the wall outside, intoxicated.
Sure.
Maybe not a police report generated, but-
Yeah.
Just to see if there's activity there.
Okay.
If there's no activity there, then I would say they're gonna go to a 1:00 license. If there's something there, not saying that you're gonna, um, punish them, we're just gonna say, listen, there's been some activity here. Police are showing up here. We ask you to tighten your reins here. Um-
We're gonna extend that review period a little longer?
We're gonna hold it to six months.
Yeah. And that makes sense.
Six months, you know, they're either gonna get it, or they're not gonna get it
Right.
At that point. And if then, at six months, if they're not, if they're still having these issues, I'd say they probably stay at 12:00.
Okay. So, if they're running a pretty, pretty clean operation, there's no issues, usually within a three-month period, as long as everything looks good. And the burden is on the owner to petition the commission?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, as long as they understand that you're looking to protect, you know, the safety and tranquility of the community-
Absolutely.
And the patrons, and that it's a temporary process, that within three months, if there's no issues, by all means, come back and we'll take another look. I don't think that's a fair way to go. I, I, again, I think you guys do a great job. Thank you for providing that information. Those folks who, who are watching and not the councils that are here can explain that to the various businesses and, and help them. So, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have, uh, one thing from the chair, Phil, before you leave.
Sure.
I, I just want the board to know that the question was raised, if someone was having a special, uh, something.
Event.
Event, that he would grant them, uh, a license as long as they got, for that special event that day, am I right?
So-
As long as they got police report and everything, so...
We, if someone in that three to six months has a special party of some sort, um, the other night winners, right now is one of the bars, and this is all public record, is closing at midnight. He, there was a fight on. He came before us. We granted him a one-day license till 1:00. I informed the police department that they have rights to be, that are one, that their, uh, employees should be gone by 1:20, so they don't think people are in there drinking or having a different type of activity. We're, we're for it. I mean, again, we're pro-business. No one's here to not want business.
No, I think it's great. You did a great job that night. Thank you for appearing.
You're welcome.
And, uh, the motion is to excuse the customer, everything. All in favor?
All in.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. On the piece, councilors, refer back the sponsor.
Make a motion, we refer, uh, item number 17 back to sponsor.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All opposed? You have referred item number 17 back to sponsor.
Madam President, could we suspend the rules and take item number five?
I have a motion to suspend rules and take item number five. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, please read item number five. Peter.
Item number five, Madam Chairman, is a petition offered by Rosa DeFlorio as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new Class II motor vehicle dealer license and, at, uh, to Fast and Furious Motor, Inc., at 153 Ferry Street. Um, let me just explain very briefly, and then you can decide what you'd like to dis, how you wanna discharge it. Uh, the owner is selling, uh, he owns two places in Everett. He's selling this one to his daughter and brother. They're going to run it. So, they're all sitting in the back here. Um, he's been in operation without any issues the last couple of years at this location. Um, they're just changing the name, and his daughter and brother are now gonna be in charge of it. Um, so I don't know if you wanted to send it to committee, or while they're here, just ask the question, the few questions you may want, uh, since they did come up and wait almost two hours. So, it's up to you, what you'd like to do or grant it. I mean, uh, there's, all the paperwork's in order. They've paid everything, and I have no issue with him, and I believe he's still gonna help run his, help, uh, his daughter run it.
Counselor Marquez.
You don't have to.
Uh, it's a new license?
Yeah.
Can we grant?
It's an existing license.
I notice it exists. Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
And he's not, you can't legally transfer it, but he's selling it or transferring it to his daughter and brother.
Can we legally do that?
Yeah, you can accept, uh, it's your decision if you choose to suspend your rules and, and allow yourself to vote on it. That's up to you.
Are they here?
They are. They're in the audience. They've been waiting.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I just noticed them, so.
As, as a cur-, typically, we do refer it to committee, but we do have some folks that came here. They've, they've been patient, and they've waited.
I didn't notice them here, so.
Uh, if my colleagues are so inclined, I, I would be inclined to, to hear from them, have them forward, and we could ask a couple of questions. So, I make that-
Do I have a motion?
I make that in form of a motion.
A motion to invite them up. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Could you please come up?
When you sit down, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is, uh, Jaws Allenkar. Um, 153 Ferry Street and 725 Broadway. And this is my, um, my daughter and my brother.
Okay. Counselor Capone? Thank you, Mr. President. Through to our guests. Just so that you understand, typically, when there's a new license, we refer to a committee, and you would come, and we'll ask you the questions we're gonna ask you tonight, but you were kind enough to come here and be patient, so we're, we'll, we'll see if we can't resolve this this evening for you.
Thank you.
Uh, so, as far as your daughter and you said, was it your-
My brother, yeah.
And your brother. Have either of you had any experience, uh, with selling veh-, uh, selling vehicles, running a business selling cars?
Um, I did. I worked with my dad for a long time, ever since he opened, um, my own opened the business.
Okay.
So, like, we worked together as a family. I helped out a lot, too. So, I know a lot.
How many years would you say that was?
Um, about three years.
Okay. So, you've seen the operation, the business. Are you familiar with paperwork?
Yes.
I'm sure he'll be able to help, help out on that. And, and how about, uh, your brother? Your brother have any experience with it?
Been in the business, uh, ten years.
Okay.
Yeah. We've been together for, you know, a long time.
And our clerk said all the paperwork is in order. I'm not aware of any issues or concerns. Have you guys had any issues or concerns at all?
No.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hamlin?
There's no issues with him. Any, um-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we have, um, a long, long history of giving out, uh, motor dealer licenses, second-class, first-class motor dealer licenses. And, um, there could be many reasons that we grant them, and many reasons that we don't wanna grant them. I cannot understand why you picked that name for your company, Fast and Furious. No, I, I mean it. You know, to me, it sounds like, come in and grab a wreck and take off.
No, no.
But no, but that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I'm not gonna vote for this, because I don't like the name. Okay? And that's the only reason. And I, I'm serious. I'm, I'm really serious about that.
I can change it if you want.
It's a Hollywood movie kind of a thing, you know, and, and I, I hope everybody decides that we, and ask you to change your name, 'cause I'm gonna ask you to change the name to something else, something more pleasant that belongs to the city of Everett. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Mr. Chairman, can you ju-, can somebody just tell me where 153 Ferry Street is? I'm sorry, I'm not, uh-
It's next to the gas station, uh, Ferry Street Gas Station.
Glendale Square.
Glendale Square.
It's in Glendale Square, Councilman.
No, no, this is the, this is the other one.
The other one. Oh.
His other one is Glendale Square.
Ferry Street, right.
Yeah. He owns both.
Yep.
Before Cherry Street, right?
Excuse our guests.
Excuse customary thanks.
Oh, sorry.
One second. Councilman Lee?
Now, was John being facetious about the whole name thing?
You know, that, that address has a bad history. It goes all the way back, and I don't mind saying the name. I don't mind saying the name, but John Blickenstaff ran an auto deal, but out of there, he was terrible. And that's the whole thing. And, you know, and I, I want it to be a nice place. I don't want it to be a Fast and Furious place. I just want it to be a nice place. That's why I'm still gonna vote no.
I can change it. It's not a problem.
Um, hold on. Um, I respectfully disagree with, uh, counselor Hamlin here, because I understand, once you own a business, you can call it whatever you like. It doesn't have any bearings on the success of the business, nor does it have any, uh, how you conduct your business. So...
Thank you for letting me know that. But it does have a bearing on me. Thank you.
Excuse customary thanks.
Excuse customary thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, favorable action?
Second motion.
Have motion favorable action. Second it. Clerk, read the rule.
Counselor Adrian?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DePiro?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
No.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Marquez?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor, uh, Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be nine ayes, one nay. You have so passed, um, the license. Uh, Mr., Jao is also here for 725, but it's a renewal. I don't know if you wanted to discharge it or just, we'll do it after. There's no issues. Yeah. He's number six also. Just if you wanted to take it.
Number six?
Yeah.
I take a motion.
That one's a renewal, though.
We have a motion, take item number six. Second it. All in favor?
He's here for this one, too. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have a clerk, we'll read item number six.
Item number six is, uh, Mr. Chairman, is a petition offered by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a, uh, this should say, a renewal Class II motor vehicle dealer license at Imperial Auto Sales at 725, because, uh...
Counselor Capone? Through you to our clerk. Any concerns, issues? All the paperwork's in order?
All paper, yes, sorry.
No complaints?
All paperwork is in order, no complaints, no issues. It's been in existence for years now.
Okay. Favorable action.
Is that right?
Have motion favorable action, the second. Clerk, read the rule.
Um, Counsel Adrian?
Yes.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DePiro?
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Counsel Martin's?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays. You have so passed that petition. They'll both be ready Wednesday afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, we do have just a couple more, and then we can revert back to the regular order of business. Um, item number 18, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion, take item number 18?
Have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, we read item number 18.
Item number 18, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counsel Gurley Adrian, that the
Counsel Adrian.
Can I just answer directly?
Yeah.
The date I gave was an estimate, obviously. Originally, it was based on the estimate given to us by Neuron for the amount of time it would take to complete their work, with an extra couple of weeks added on for us to finish up. Obviously, in this sort of thing, delays happen every once in a while. There is no set date. We have gotten deliverables from Neuron, so that part of the phase is complete. We are now implementing and re-adding all content. So basically, the building of the site is complete. All of the backbone functionality is there. It's just a matter of getting all of the content over, making everything as pretty as possible, pictures, that sort of thing. Couple of minor bugs to work out, some deep links, meaning that there's external sites linking to pages on the current site that we don't want to break, so that people aren't following like a job link, for example, and going not to that specific page. So all of that needs to be reconciled, so that there's nothing. We want it as smooth as possible to launch. I guess the main problem was I had set before the end of February as the date, because I thought I could hit that. But there are other, you know, things come up, unfortunately. Third-party stuff, the deep link thing, I'm afraid I have to take culpability for it. It wasn't something we considered beforehand. But we are on track to possibly hit February, although it's getting a little tight. But yes, we, basically, we should be up within a matter, if I say weeks and miss it again. But yes, March seems eminently doable. We just really want a nice, smooth, and clean launch, rather than have, you know, something that makes a bad first impression. In the meantime, of course, the existing site is completely functional. It's not like something's being withheld. It's just we want a really good launch, rather than something cosmetic that we then build up.
So the reason why this was brought up was because there were residents that weren't able to reach out to the zoning board members, because the website wasn't updated. And so the reason why I brought this up as a concern was that if we're going to get an estimated date of February, and now if it's going to be pushed back to March, all I wanted to know was if we could either, A, update the current website, to have the current accurate members' information on it. And if we can't do that, if we can put it like as a hard copy on the wall, like where the city clerk's bulletin board is, so that people can know who to contact. That was, that was the reason why I asked that.
I would just ask, any mistakes that you find up there? That's kind of, I don't necessarily know all the departments. It's kind of the responsibility to get that information, or inform me that there's mistakes. Absolutely, everything up there can be corrected, should be corrected. That's one of the delays going forward. I'm porting content over that isn't necessarily correct. I've got wrong numbers, wrong, wrong names. That has to be corrected, obviously.
Yeah, so I'm just-
But yes, any mistakes that you're aware of, please forward to myself or anyone to get to us, because that can be corrected immediately.
Right. That's what I assume. But I was told that I had to wait until the new website went out.
No, not, I'm not sure where you got that from. The, one of the calls for the new website is to get people excited about it, so that they continue to maintain, rather than kind of, well, it's there, it's done, it's working. Yeah, I have to be informed of changes in order to get the stuff up there.
Perfect. So I will work with you on making those changes.
Excellent, yeah. Anything that's, that's wrong, not only will that help day one now, it also makes things a lot quicker to port over to the new site, because I'll have accurate information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Throw you to our guests. Thank you very much for being here. So, so March or so, we should definitely have fairly complete.
Yeah, again, I've, when I said February, I really was hoping to meet February.
Yeah, well, things happen.
Yeah. We're not talking about a lot of work left.
Right.
It's just that it tends to be that the last two, three, four, five percent tends to take a lot longer than you would ever anticipate.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I know the whole move is to make it as interactive as possible, kind of like a virtual city hall, so you don't have to come in to do as much in the building. You could do it online, which is wonderful.
Absolutely.
One of the things that I have seen, some updates, because one of the concerns I had is some of the information, board members, et cetera, wasn't accurate. You know, it's a lot of information there. It's hard to see everything. So I thank you for the suggestion that we reach out and let you know about the different things we see. One thing in particular, someone had mentioned to me that there, and I know the boards don't, they're not full-time jobs. So maybe if it's a little more user-friendly in terms of who they contact, if they have a question about a certain thing. In particular, some folks had mentioned disability commissions, some other commissions. And it's kind of hard, you have to kind of ferret through and try to figure out the umbrella where they're from. If we could try to make it a little more user-friendly in terms of, if you have a question, blah, 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 here's a general number, wherever, kind of redirect them.
You've actually hit exactly what the goal was in design, because our current site, basically, as you said, if you want to find something, you kind of have to know what department to look in and dig down to there.
Yeah.
The new site is going to be very task-oriented.
Okay, good.
We've done extensive usability tests with, basically, blind testing, giving somebody, you know, a task to do, they come to the site and see how quickly they can do it.
Right.
Right now, it is very kind of, even the stuff that you would think are obvious.
It could be a little, it could be a little bumpy, yeah.
You know, I want a marriage license. Oh, yeah, clerk's office.
Sure.
You don't have to know that coming there.
Exactly.
You're coming there with a goal, this is what I want to do. I want to pay a parking ticket. You get there within two or three clicks.
Yeah.
You're looking for a specific piece of information, you can get that question answered. Any task that you want to do, you should be able to get to without having to know what department it is. You just need to know why you're there.
Excellent.
And that's, that was, that was the overarching goal, to make that kind of usability, and also discoverability, so that while they're there, they'll be able to find out, oh, I didn't know we could do that. I didn't know I could have the water department notify me if my usage goes up.
Absolutely.
And getting that there might be a leak.
Absolutely. And it's tough, because there is so much information on that website. And I consider myself semi-computer savvy. I know what the function of different departments are. And there are some searches that I've done, and they've been a little challenging. You get to where you need to get to. But if you don't have that additional information, expertise, knowledge, you're going to get lost in a lot of it. So I'm glad to hear those are the kinds of things that we're addressing.
Every little bit of friction tends to frustrate people.
Absolutely.
And with more, two or three of those, they give up entirely.
Yeah.
We had a lot of that in our initial usability study, just after a few, I don't know where I'm going.
Yeah.
It's easier to call three and one.
And there's so much there, so much useful information. That's the last thing we want, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, no, thank you. I appreciate it.
Again, and again, I do apologize. I, I, I try to be as realistic as possible, but the date I gave was the date I set for us. Stuff comes up, unfortunately. Rest assured, not only will it be up as soon as possible, hopefully, it'll be in as perfect shape as possible.
Counsel Martins.
I had a question. Thank you. Sorry. And I just wanted to, just to be fair to Mr. Dorgan, we actually took two hours last week to go over the skeleton of what the website's going to be. And he's currently waiting for content information from the departments. So I actually met with him to add certain things, but it's not with him. We need to work with the departments, so we can have those things. But as far as what comes from you, I was pleased to see the plans for more functionality in the website, and also accessibility and the progress with adding translation. So thank you, and I will continue to work with the departments to add the information that we need to see.
Thank you very much. And I apologize about the two hours. I tend to ramble.
Anyone else? Excuse the customary thanks. Have a second? All in favor? Thank you. Your pleasure. Counsel Adrian, your pleasure?
Say it again.
Your pleasure? What's your, this is your piece. What's your motion?
I take it back. I'm done with it. Refer back to someone.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Close. The eyes have it.
So the signee keeps offering.
Okay. Could we spend the rules and take item 13?
I have a motion to spend the rule and take item number 13 and 14.
Actually, 13 and 14.
13 and 14 collectively. All in favor? All opposed? The eyes have it. Clerk, please read item number 13.
This is for ordainment.
Items 13 and 14 are both ordinances offered by Council President Rosa de Florio. 13 is an ordinance better document than violations that may lead to suspensions and/or revocations of licenses and permits issued under the authority of the city council. And 14 is an ordinance allowing the city council to revoke inactive licenses and permits issued under its authority when their supply is limited. Both have been enrolled, posted in the newspaper. This is for ordainment for both of them.
Fable action for ordainment, number 13.
Excuse me. Counsel Adrian.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
President de Florio.
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero nays. You have so ordained item 13. Number 14, sorry. We just need a favorable action as amended. You had those two little minor amendments.
Okay.
And they weren't substantial, so they can be passed.
But if I could, on number 14, did we enroll it as amended, or no?
No, but you can ordain it as amended, as long as it's not substantial.
Okay.
It is allowed, because you only changed two words. You went from reasonable, investigate, from investigation to reasonable, and to facts, to known facts.
Okay.
It's not substantial, and the law, the law allows you to-
So looking for favorable action to ordain as amended.
Yes.
So item 14 is favorable action to ordain as amended. One second.
As amended.
As amended.
Counsel Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
President de Florio.
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero nays. You have so ordained as amended. And we can revert back.
Please revert back to the regular order of business. I believe item number three is next.
Madam President, make a motion, we take item number 31 off the calendar, please.
Second.
Wait a minute, I have a motion to take item number 31.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it. Clerk, please read item number 31.
Item 31, madam, yes, it's an ordinance. Item 31 is an ordinance offered by Council President Rosa de Florio, an ordinance adding definitions associated with flammable products to Chapter 8 of the revised ordinances. The fire department have reviewed them, and accepted, and added a couple definitions. They are just definitions. If you feel comfortable enrolling it, you could review it. But they are just definitions, and approved by the fire department.
With your pleasure, Counselors.
There's about 12 definitions, that's it. Just explaining what a Class II, Class III liquid, flammable gas, flammable soil, a flash point. It's all in accordance with the, yeah, the fire department. They just needed some tweaking.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. So this was definition provided by the fire department. We're not going to change it. So I would say favorable action.
Thank you.
For enrollment.
Yes.
Fable action for enrollment, item number 31. Clerk, call the roll.
Counsel Adrian.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
President de Florio.
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero nays. You have so ordained as amended. And we can revert back.
Please revert back to the regular order of business. I believe item number three is next.
Madam President, make a motion, we take item number 31 off the calendar, please.
Second.
Wait a minute, I have a motion to take item number 31.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it. Please read, clerk, please read item number 31.
Item 31, madam, yes, it's an ordinance. Item 31 is an ordinance offered by Council President Rosa de Florio, an ordinance adding definitions associated with flammable products to Chapter 8 of the revised ordinances. The fire department have reviewed them, and accepted, and added a couple definitions. They are just definitions. If you feel comfortable enrolling it, you could review it. But they are just definitions, and approved by the fire department.
With your pleasure, Counselors.
There's about 12 definitions, that's it. Just explaining what a Class II, Class III liquid, flammable gas, flammable soil, a flash point. It's all in accordance with the, yeah, the fire department. They just needed some tweaking.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Madam President. So this was definition provided by the fire department. We're not going to change it. So I would say favorable action.
Thank you.
For enrollment.
Yes.
Fable action for enrollment, item number 31. Clerk, call the roll.
Counsel Adrian.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President de Florio.
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero nays. You have so enrolled the ordinance.
Eleven yes, zero nays.
Could we spend the rules and take item 15?
Spend the rules and take item number 15. I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it. Clerk, please read item number 15.
One moment, please. Item number 15 is a resolution offered by Counselure Girlie Adrian, that the city review and create rules and guidelines on how board and commission members are appointed and chosen. I do believe there's another communication there, and members of the audience.
I don't have a communication.
Yeah, it should be on the multiple.
Counsel Adrian.
Yeah. Can I ask Assistant City Solicitor Keith to come up, please?
I don't have a communication.
Yeah, it should be on the bulletin.
Counsel Adrian.
Can I ask Assistant City Solicitor Keith to come up, please?
Second.
Motion to have Counselor Slattery come up. I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. I don't have one. Sorry.
Good evening, almost good morning, members of the council. Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
So you and I have spoken about this.
We have.
And so when I read this, it says new appoint, it says new appointments will have the verification of the property as well as a resume or a letter of intent.
Correct.
What about the old ones?
The old appointments?
Like the people who are, who are on it, who are currently on it.
I don't understand. Oh, people that are up for reappointment?
Right. What's, what's going to be the process for them? Because you and I spoke about this.
Yeah, sure.
So.
Yeah, we have different recollections sometimes about what we speak of, but...
But this is in the email, so.
So I don't think there's even a problem with reappointments, but I mean generally this body, Dan, is reappointments as a...
Will it include a resume or a letter of intent? That's my question.
So what you're asking is this body be provided with every appointment, reappointment or new appointment? Yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
So will it be included in there?
If we have them, sure. Yeah, if we have them.
If you have them?
Sure.
So you will let us know if you don't have them?
So I think what we discussed is on a case-by-case basis through you and request...
Because the Secretary of State, yep, the Secretary of State said, go ahead.
What's your recollection? Go ahead.
No, what's your recollection? Go ahead.
No, what's your recollection, then I'll, I'll tell you.
Go ahead.
So I'm going to tell you?
I want to make sure.
All right. So when we did discuss this, it was about whether this may or may not be an employment Was fair to give either a resume or a letter of intent. Sometimes applicants don't give those. So when, no, what your piece actually says, will we review the process, right?
I'm asking, I just asked the question.
I didn't get any questions in advance either, Counselor.
No, I saw this language in here.
Sure.
Did you see the language?
So I didn't get any questions in advance, but I'm willing to answer your questions. So I think the agenda item says that you are asking us to review and create guidelines?
Yes.
So I can tell you that going forward, new appointments, and I can even tell you now, even reappointments, that's fine.
Yep.
Will they be placed on the, on the agenda? We'll give you the verification because this came up in the last meeting, and it's important, verification of their eligibility.
Right.
Right, under our charter. And if there's a resume or a letter of intent for consideration, we would definitely give that as part of the package. And we also would plan on now inviting them and for questions if you so choose. So yes, we did review it, and, and that's what we think, you know, is, is good for the function of this body.
So for going forward, if there is a reappointment and if I make, or if any of us as members make a request for a letter of intent or a resume, you guys are supposed to...
So I'm going to repeat what you said. If, if there's a reappointment and you make a request, absolutely.
You will provide it.
I can't say it any other way, yes, yes. We'll provide it for you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
I just want to remind you that anything that's on the agenda according to charter, you have to ask the person seven days prior questions so they come prepared, okay? That's for everybody, not just, thank you for answering the question, even though it wasn't given to you.
So thank you for coming up.
I have Counsel McLaughlin. I'm sorry, are you all done, Counsel Adrian? I, you, what's your questions?
Madam President, may we invite up Ms. Webby from Human Resources for one quick question?
Do I have a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Ms. Webby?
Hello.
Please state your name for the record.
Laura Moore, Human Resources Director.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Moore. I, I know you, Ms. Webby, I apologize. I apologize. Just real brief, what is the standard now, today, for a point, a reappointment or a moment? How does the process play out today?
So we have a job vacancy, we, or a vacancy on a board or commission, we post the commission, we post the position online in the newspapers, social media, multiple outlets. We encourage anyone and everybody to apply. We ask them to submit a cover letter and a resume. Some of these people submit a resume, no cover letter, some of them they submit a cover letter with no resume, basically what we get. And then we interview people and appoint them and put them before the council.
Okay, so that process is in place.
Mm-hmm.
Previously true tonight, it's already been happening.
Yes.
Okay, and I kind of thought that was because I've talked to some of the members that have said that that's, my, my only question, one question that I do have is like tonight the liquor commission came up. There was two members of the liquor commission here. I know we have three members.
We do not have three.
Well, I know we have three spots, excuse me, right, Mr. Slattery? I apologize, that was misspoken. We have three positions on the, on that commission.
Yes.
Will we see, has there been resumes submitted for a new appointee to that board?
I don't think so.
But we have advertised.
Yes.
It's not that, it's not being advertised or that it's not being put out there as a...
I, I, my belief is it has been, that's a board that meets on multiple days of the month and they get called in for special meetings on short notice, depending on whether, like you had talked with Phil about.
Yeah.
Whether there was police activity or something like that. So I don't, I don't know why we haven't gotten any, but we, we don't have any.
And, and I was just using that board because it was here tonight, but I know that there are other boards and commissions that have had vacancies.
Yes.
But, but just my question is, we always put them out to the public and let everybody know that there is an opening in X, Y, and Z board or commission.
So they're advertised online and in the newspaper, I, I think.
When we intend to fill the vacancies.
Right.
Okay, great, and Ms. Moore, I'll talk to you about the liquor one, just curiosity, if there had been anybody that came forward to apply for it, and if we were looking to apply. But if you have any information that you would like to share with us tonight, be, be our guest to share with us if you can.
I would only state in terms of reappointments, if we're reappointing an existing member, it's, to the best of my knowledge, we don't ask them to submit an updated...
We might not have anything.
...resume and letter of intent, so we could include the older one that we had gotten here two prior, that would be fine.
Bless you.
But, so we can give you the documents that we have in that case, just to be clear on that. Great.
Okay, Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to our invited guests. Thank you very much, you know, for being here to address this. I just want to be clear, you know, this, every time we talk about charter, I feel like I'm bringing this up, even though there is the requirement to do the questions seven days in advance, as you have done, Counselor, it's up to the discretion of the guest as to whether or not they feel comfortable addressing the answers. Obviously, it's in everyone's best interest to get as much information upfront, so I do appreciate you be willing to answer the questions.
I'd fully disclose, I mean, you know, we, we like the questions so we can do some background...
You don't waste everyone's time, absolutely, I get it.
If there are natural derivatives of those questions.
Sure, some stuff, it's basic enough that we know, and other things you have to research a little bit, and rather than waste everyone's time, you want the information upfront. This one's fairly straightforward, so I appreciate you...
And sometimes a written communication can shorten a meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. And a phone call could do it, too, so.
Right.
With regards to this, I think part of the, part of the confusion, too, is under our rules, other than a matter of appointment, public safety, technically it's supposed, new appointments, technically it's supposed to go to committee. And as a courtesy, the body is kind of, you know, waive that, especially if you know the individual. And I think, I think to the council's point, the, the resume for reappointment is a great thing, too. And, and the reason being, although the majority of us may know these individuals, we, we always have turnover and we have new faces on, on the council, they may not be familiar with someone, and they might be a wonderful person, and it's not like these folks are making tons of money, they're putting a lot of time in, we ask a lot of them, and we appreciate their efforts. But anything that you can do both for reappointments and the new appointments, I think would be helpful to this body, and, and that way, maybe we could continue to avoid a committee setting to keep things moving along.
Three point three of the charter dictates that new appointments do go through committee, but we've, we've not done that in years and years.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, and the thing is, I think that's familiarity with, with the individuals that are being appointed. But for the benefit of the members of the council who aren't aware of them, or the newer members, when you have a, a reappointment, that's a good thing, too. And if it's an older resume, so be it. The reality is, they've been doing the job.
And we've had some.
So we know they're qualified to do the job, and as long as you see enough in their background, you say, okay, that's great. And I, I think that that just helps the process, so.
Right.
So I, I would be asking that with regards to the reappointments, that we provide that information as well. I think it's an excellent point that was made by the council.
But I just wanted to bring up the point, so she would know, even if you're not seeing a, a new document, I feel like the old document would serve as...
Right, say, what's this? This is six years old.
Yeah.
Exactly, now.
It would be insulting to be insulted, which would be the new document.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
And with your pleasure, Counselor.
Oh, I refer back to sponsor.
I have a motion to refer back sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Revert back to the regular order of business, please. Yeah. Number three.
Item number three is a petition offered by Council President Rosa de Florio that the Everett City Council hereby approves the lodging house license renewal for Fennos at 336 Broadway.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to our clerk, any concerns, issues?
I have none here. I did reissue all the police reports, though I gave them back in January, but I wanted, because there was a few on there, to make sure you have them again. There's been no calls to me. All paperwork for me is in order. They're all paid and...
What piece is this? I'm sorry.
Number three.
Number three. Three and four are going to be lodging licenses.
Why don't you send them both up to the license committees, we can talk to them. Whether the papers are good or not, we should just address the issues they may have here and just see if we could get a three-month, uh, police report, see if they improve on what they've had. Check, go through this, there's a couple of serious things there, maybe...
I see.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to see this term before the license board, and maybe we'll set up a three-month program like we did with the other people who's, they'll be coming up in the middle of May with their report, so I'd like to do this also on both of these pieces.
So on thirteen, I mean, three and four? Well, he hasn't read four yet.
Yeah.
But on number three, you want to send it to Community and Business Development?
Yeah, send it up to the license, we get March ninth open, right? Now?
We don't, okay.
Whatever they...
So the motion is to send it to Community and Business Development, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Item number three is going to Community and Business Development. Clerk, read item number four.
Item number four, this is the same owner. President, it's a petition offered by Counsel Rosa, Counsel President Rosa de Florio that the Everett City Council hereby approves the lodging house license renewal for 134 Linden Street lodging, 134 Linden, uh, street lodging at 134 Linden Street.
Okay. So the motion is to send item number four to the Community and Business Development?
Correct, so move.
And I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number four, the ayes have it. Will be referred to Community and Business Development.
Madam Chairman, can we spend the rules and take items seven, nine, and ten collectively?
Seven, nine, and ten collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Clerk, please read item number seven, nine, and ten collectively.
Madam, these are all committee, committee reports, either on Committee of the Whole or Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety, Public Service. Seven is a resolution offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero requesting that a representative from Encore Boston Harbor in the mayor's office appear at the next Government Operations Committee meeting to discuss employment data in relation to Everett residents. The committee recommended to refer this back to sponsor. Item nine is a resolution offered by Counsel Ward Six, Michael J. McLaughlin, that the CFO appear at the February Ways and Means Meeting Committee and provide an itemized list of every city account that has taken in money over the past three years. Committee also referred, uh, recommends to refer this back to sponsor. And item ten is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McLaughlin that is on the mayor considering using sixty-five percent of Encore Casino revenue to reduce taxes in the city. Committee recommended to refer this item back to sponsor.
Move to accept committee reports, refer back to sponsor.
So I think you can take them all collectively since it's a referral back.
I have a motion to...
Yeah.
Accept the committee report on items number seven...
Nine.
Nine and ten, and refer them back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have it.
Spend the rules, take item twenty-one, please.
I have a motion to spend the rules and take item number twenty-one.
Same motion.
Have a second. Clerk, please read item number twenty-one.
President, item twenty-one. Excuse me. Item twenty-one is a, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Gurley Adrian that the city look into adding bike lanes and better signage on major streets.
So I'm gonna, no, sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
So I have spoken with Jay on this, and so we are going to schedule a follow-up meeting to work on this, as well as Shane McNally, he wants to be part of the meeting, so we're going to work, all three of us, to work on this together. So I'll bring this back to sponsor.
Would you, you don't want to refer it to Jay's office, you want to refer it back to sponsor?
Oh, yeah. But I, yeah.
So you're going to refer it back to sponsor and you're going to handle it directly?
Yep.
Is that correct? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Back to item eight, right? Madam President, item eight is a resolution offered by Counsel Gurley Adrian that to request the mayor and his staff explain how the Everett Citizens Foundation members were selected and if everyone on the committee's input was valued, i.e., did every member on the committee have a vote on where the hundred and fifty thousand should be allocated. Committee recommended to refer this item to Assistant City Solicitor Matthew Latanzi.
Counsel Adrian.
You want to come before you, you want to come up?
No. So Matt has already went up in front of the committee, he addressed my questions, and he has sent me the documents, I am fine with it. Refer back to sponsor.
Accept the committee report and place on file and refer it back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Can we ask, spend the rules, take item nineteen?
Spend the rules, take item nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Clerk, please read item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen, Madam President, is a resolution offered by counselors Michael Marquezzi and Michael McLaughlin that is on the mayor present the purchase and sales agreement for Pope John, as well as any, as a twenty-one E updated report and all communications between the City of Everett and the Arch Diocese on this matter. You did get some presentation this evening that was referred to me.
Yes.
From them, I just want to make sure you had any...
Move to invite Attorney Slattery and Mr. Souza.
Second.
A little tired, sorry.
What if we'd invite you?
Sorry.
To invite Counsel Slattery?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Good evening.
Good evening. Quick questions, that's all.
Yep.
The, the actual, um, the actual price is ten thousand, two hundred and fifty? Ten million, two hundred and fifty thousand? Is that the actual price?
We got the documents.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd been ten two five, and I think it was two fifty three.
And we have, yeah, we have a little thing, you know, November sixth, we're an offer of ten million dollars, and I believe it comes back, it says ten, ten million, two hundred and fifty.
Yep.
Just a little concern. I, I know prior to it being a school, I think it was a work yard for the MBTA, do we have any twenty-one E problems there?
So in this transaction, it wasn't required. Under my understanding, I, when the city then puts it out to bid and a developer gets involved...
Yeah.
And turns it into housing, we would require them to perform the environmental evaluation or assessment.
Now, is it all, is it, is the housing or the school come up for a vote before us, or is already predetermined what they're doing with the property?
I, I think we've covered that. I'd have to go review the record.
Yeah, I, I was just curious, because last week I asked a question.
So the transfer, the transfer has taken place.
Transfer has taken place, yeah.
The city has title, and I think that acquisition went through council.
I, I'm thinking the, the transfer of land thereafter.
Yes.
Counsel, we have to speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Put that mic to.
Is that on?
The speaker's, uh, the guest speaker, so please, thank you.
Tronie Souza, Director of Plan Development, I believe the, if there is a transfer, so the city owns the land.
Yes.
So may require further action from the council.
All right. Last week I asked a question, we got, the cost would be for a new school, and the price was like between sixty and eighty million dollars. That's what the answer I got. Obviously, there's something out there for a new school, that we need a new school for some reason, because we do have a growing population, we have ten thousand more people here in the next five to ten years. Are we going to do anything to address that, when we have two schools already here that we could probably rehab and accommodate the needs, probably a lot less between sixty and eighty million dollars? I mean...
I'm going to have to invoke the question rule, I have no idea.
All right. I, I just wanted to know where, what direction we're heading, because at one time I knew we were looking to put a school up, and then the next thing, we're not going to put a school, put more apartments, we're obviously, you know, with our senior and veterans allegedly at this point.
We're hoping with full participation in the census, too, we'll know how many students we need to accommodate and what federal funds we'll be getting from that process.
Because like I said, we, we have a school, I don't know how long we're going to be renting it, the Devon School, if we have, you know, ambitions to buy it, and so if we buy that, it'll probably be five, six million dollars for that school.
I wish I...
Alone, but, you know, just, you know, trying to imply that, that was my concern about this whole thing here. But we do have a deal, all right? Twenty-one E will be done the next process, right?
Yes, because it'll be up for development at that point.
Okay, I'm done, thank you. Say anybody?
Madam President? Thank you. Through you to, um, you know, I just received this packet, you know what? I apologize. I'm actually okay with this. I'm going to ask that we refer this to Mr. Souza so that I can discuss this in further length with him, for I'm seeing this package tonight, I'd like to take a look at it and be able to review it more thoroughly, and, and maybe all of my questions are answered in this packet, I just don't have, I haven't had the opportunity to read through all of this. So I would make a motion that we would refer this to Mr. Souza and to Mr. Slattery so that the three of us can meet, if Counsel Marquezzi wants to as well, but to, to look this packet over and to be able to dissect it a little bit.
Sure. Call with any questions.
Be glad to call with. Perfect, thank you. That will be my recommendation, refer this to...
Any further questions for the, uh, yes? If not, exclusive, if you have a question...
Can we make a motion to take item twenty-two? I think it all, oh, all right, never mind.
Exclusion of the customer, thanks.
Second. Before we, before we vote on the motion, before we vote on the motion, I just...
Do you want to go on?
Because, because the piece is still in front of us, so I just, I just want to point out something to my colleagues. When we were here at the second meeting in December, there was an inquiry, is there anything written, any emails, any communications? We were told no. Told everything was oral. You're holding in your hand, not, not from you folks, no, you don't need the answer. There is a letter in your hands dated November sixth from the mayor's office to the director of property. So I point that out to you, and the second thing that I point out to you is that at that meeting in December, I specifically asked about school overcrowding. I was told there is no school overcrowding, but yet we had a public meeting at the library last week, and the mayor acknowledged that there's school overcrowding. week, and the mayor acknowledged that there's school overcrowding. So let's be clear about what we're looking at for information, and we're asking questions, answers that we're getting. So now on the motion, you can, you can vote.
Look at your motion. Just a little second to the council. Vote second.
Madam President, I'd make a motion, we refer this to Mr. Sousa and Mr. Slattery, so that we can discuss, because, again, as Council Capone said, this is the first time I'm seeing these emails that we didn't think existed, so I need to dissect them.
So the motion is to refer this to Mr. Slattery and, uh, Mr. Sousa. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
So, yeah, no, so now...
Counsel Martin, I'm sorry.
Can you make a motion to actually take item twenty-two, which would invite the Director of Development back?
I'll second.
I threw him off the stage. Item number twenty-two.
We're keeping you awake.
It is new business, so, Madam President, are we gonna do new business here? That's, okay, that's fine.
Uh, new business, I'm sorry, new business, I am not gonna do new business tonight, we have way too much going on, so my recommendation is that new business gets referred to the next meeting.
New business.
Or to such committees.
Or to such committees, or whatever committee you want to send, so I will leave it up to the, um...
That's really up to the body.
I'll leave it up to the body, I'll leave, yeah, but I didn't want him up here yet, so...
That's fine.
Uh, item number, what are we reading? Item number twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Go ahead.
Madam President, item twenty-two is a resolution offered by Councilors McGlaughlin and Capone, that the Director of Community Development or his adjutant appear at the next council meeting to discuss options surrounding AMI for affordable housing development in Everett.
Do you want to discuss it, or do you want to send to a committee to discuss?
Well, to Counsel McGlaughlin?
Madam President, I'm actually going to make a motion that we refer this piece to committee, and, actually, back to sponsor, Council Mines has a piece on that I think is going to help relieve some of this, and be able to work in conjunction. So at this time, I'll make a motion to refer this back to sponsor, and we'll work under the umbrella of the piece of business that Council Mines is proposing.
So the motion is to refer item number twenty-two back to sponsor. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Oh, Counsel Capone is on that too, I'm sorry. Right. Is that okay?
Can I go back to the regular order?
No, I didn't see an amendment now.
Back to the regular order of business? I think we're on eleven, right?
Yeah.
Committee report from today's evening. Item number eleven?
Eleven, yeah.
Correct. This is a committee report on community and business development from this evening. Madam President, it's a resolution offered by Counsel Rosa de Florio, that the property manager fifteen and twenty-one Staples have appear at the next council meeting to address ongoing issues at both properties, and the police log be provided also.
Accept committee report and grant further time?
Yep, accept the committee report and grant further time. Do I have a second?
Will we have him up the next meeting?
Yeah, we're, we're...
We don't have a report on it, do we?
It's in committee still.
It's in committee.
It's still in committee.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item twelve?
It was granted further time, in committee.
Item twelve. Madam President, it's an order offered by Counsel Wayne Ametsuski, that the city clerk and the election department make the necessary changes to the city charter by way of a homeroom petition, to make the ward council seats exclusive to their particular ward, and, not citywide, it should say ward, council and school committee seats.
Counsel Ametsuski.
Thank you, Madam President. This was on the agenda two months ago, month and a half, and I see Attorney Slattery approaching our visitation table, but I know that Counselwoman, Counselor Mahia was looking into this, but I'd like to hear if we could, a motion to invite Attorney Slattery on this item?
I have a motion to invite Attorney Slattery, I do have a second. All in favor? All opposed?
Good evening, Counsel.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Slattery, I know that Counselwoman, Counsel, Attorney Mahia was meeting with somebody in some kind of legal department with the state, or something like that. Could you, do you have any information with this piece?
I wish I did, so Solicitor Mahia has been out on leave.
I believe the city clerk has the answers to this, if you don't mind.
All right, but you can, I'd like you to stay here, so that whatever the city clerk says, you'll be able to give feedback to Attorney Mahia. I'd like to invite our city clerk.
Second.
I have a motion to invite the city clerk, and I do have a second. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I know that you and I have discussed this, this piece, could you give us an update of where we're at?
Sure, about, give or take, three, four weeks ago, Attorney Mahia and I, and outside legal counsel from KP Law, Lauren Goldberg, discussed charter changes. We discussed the charter in its entirety, because there are some tweaks and things that are needed, that are missing from our charter, now that we'd like to have, our charter's fully in effect, it works well, but we'd like to tweak it a little. The main concern is obviously the letter from the community group that sent us the letter back in September, discussing potential litigation going forward, if we did not act and look at how our elected officials are voting. You know, currently, we are, even though we have ward city councillors, they're not voted in the ward, they're voted citywide. Lowell has already made an agreement going forward, though they have a little different setup, where all the city councillors at large and school committee are voted, they're at large members, they're not divvied up by ward, so there's nine and six, I believe, but they are going to the ward setup like we had prior, so there'll be ward city councillors voting in the ward, and at large, at large. They believe, and this group believes, that this violates federal law, and is not fair to especially minority groups. So before we get into litigation and have to discuss it, we'd like to be proactive. I do intend on meeting with the group very soon, hopefully with the administration also, because, you know, we like to be proactive. KP Law agrees that we should be proactive, we should address this immediately, and Counsel from KP Law, Lauren Goldberg, is drafting some language now, just for us to absorb. When that will be given to us, I'm not sure, but she will work on it, we will have another meeting hopefully in the coming weeks, and we're gonna move forward. I did address this at the school committee meeting last week, I don't know if you know, they didn't invite me up before them...
Oh, this was on your agenda?
They asked me to just speak about it, because they heard that this was a potential change, and it does affect them, so, and they should be notified.
And how do they feel about it? I'm just curious.
I don't know that they really gave a consensus, 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 excuse me, but we are going to talk with them going forward, so they understand what may or may not happen, but after talking with legal counsel outside, this looks like something that we should proactively do and address in some manner. I know this question's also regarding, can we do this without going through a charter change? Yes, we can, that was addressed in, in our meeting, through KP Law, Doe, myself, and legal counsel for the city, don't necessarily a hundred percent agree, it is done across the state, it is done just now in Lowell, it is done in many other communities, KP Law has agreed, and so hasn't attorneys from the Secretary of State's office, because I go to clerk's conferences, and we discussed this briefly two or three weeks ago when I was there. So I did address the concerns of some of the members here, that we didn't believe that it was legal to do it that way, they disagreed, and showed language, which was hidden somewhere in finance law, it was very obscure, so if you didn't know where to look for it, you wouldn't know. But it was addressed, we did address it, because it was a concern by many members here. So I just want to make sure I covered everything that we briefly talked about.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, I really appreciate it. You know, no matter how you feel about this, I personally feel that a ward councilman represents his own ward, but votes on everything else, you know, and, but that's just my feeling, I just don't want the city to be in a position, I was contacted a year or two ago regarding this, and I, and I had put it on the agenda, and I've spoken about this in the past, but I'm glad to see this movement here, and it can be done through the Secretary of State's office.
Through a homeroom petition, so it would come to this body, this body would send it to the legislature, legislature would say yes.
Okay. But they're aware that Everett is possibly in violation of the, what's the term I'm looking for?
It's a federal statute, I actually...
Federal, fairness?
Yeah, it's...
District fairness thing, and, you know, that's what I was told anyway, but disenfranchised, but thank you, Councilman DePiero. You can lose your ward and still be the councilman for that ward, that's just not practical in the way, you know, that I'm the way of thinking, and I know there's people on the fence, there's good side, bad side, come on now, it's illegal, this is what you found out, pretty much you just said that. Now, come on now, you know, that's the problem here, you know?
I don't want to say that, I believe that.
What's right is right, the charter has made some great improvements to this community. This is a flaw, I mean, come on, it's a flaw, it's the only one, I tell people from outside of this city, oh, and they're looking at signs, they come to visit me, I had a little barbecue, what's this ward say? I thought this was Ward One, he's voted city, why? They can't make heads or tails, these are dignitaries from other, elected officials from other communities. Stop staying on the fence, and I know that, you know, well, we get the vote and everything, and the district councilman should get paid less, you gotta be kidding me, it's unheard of, mall, the next door neighbors, they get eight wards.
Almost every city...
I'm just trying to correct the mistake, and, you know, it's not up to the council, it's really a legal matter, really, and I've been told that we've got to correct this, and that's all I'm trying to do. Now, Counsel, Counsel Mahia, I hope you'll...
I will.
Give her the information, and let's move forward on this before we get sued, that's the problem here.
Counsel, do you have any further questions for the, for the, for our guests? If not, you can, you can...
No, no, I just want to...
You can give us your comments after everybody has asked a question.
Well, I want to thank you, Mr. Clerk, and Mr. Slattery tonight, thank you.
Glad I got help.
Counselor DePiero.
I did have some questions, Madam President, but they were asked and answered, thank you.
Counselina Paulatana.
Thank you. Okay, I've done a little research on this myself, and as far as the charter change itself goes, I mean, I've got twenty years' experience in bringing the question before the voters in the first place. Has the city been served with any type of suit?
No, and I've stated I, we were looking to be proactive, we have known.
Are any of the wards, I know one of the concerns with the, with this letter is that it's potentially discriminatory, that certain groups may not be represented in a ward, something to that effect.
Yes, a lot of the law, yeah.
Okay. Do we have any wards that are predominantly one group or another, where that, where that ethnically comes into play?
I have to say, I wouldn't know, because we don't profile.
Yeah, but you're a life, but you're a life resident, based on your experience as a life resident, would you say that in, there are parts of Everett that are predominantly one or the other?
I'd say one ward has a predominant, at least Ward One has a more predominant race group, but that's just observation, not any status, statistics, I just wanted to show you.
And that Ward One would be the one ward having represented it for sixteen years, I know a little bit about. The only reason why I'm asking these questions is because I have concerns about anything that, that takes the decision away from the voters. First of all, Cambridge and Medford are both two cities close to Everett that elect citywide all representatives. I spoke to both cities' city clerks today.
I do have something to say on just one of them. Cambridge does have a different system, as though, it's still called ranked choice voting, which does not violate the law. Medford may still be doing what we're doing, but they, I'm confident, will be served with the same letter, if they have not already, they will be, because...
They have not.
And I agree with that, but Lowell was first, they've gone very slowly, this group, and gone through the line, we were next on the list, and got the letter, and I'm sure once they know, or if they don't know, they will be sending Medford the letter, because they have been very equitable, they're sending it to everybody. Ranked choice voting is different, though, and it is allowed under that statute, it was part of a choice in Lowell, they chose the wards, I just want to let you know that.
Well, again, my main concern is that before any members of this board, you know, this body take a vote, that they review chapter forty-three B of the Mass General laws, because that is what generated the change in the, in the charter in the first place. Two thousand nine, I mean, the big concern here is that people are not being represented, and that's understandable, but let's, let's have, let's have a little history here. In two thousand nine, there was a vote in the city of Everett, citywide, to start a charter commission. It was a uni, it was a large-scale approval to do that, and in the process, there were, what, nine, how many, how many members were... There were nine independently elected representatives from the city, right across the, you know, the core, the city, who represented and served for two years, conducting public hearings, taking feedback from residents, before they formulated any charter changes. And then in two thousand eleven, again, that question came before the voters and passed by almost ninety percent. So this is not something that the city council decided, it's not something that an, that a appointed group decided, this is a decision made by the, by the voters of Everett to conduct, this was a decision to elect nine independently elected representatives for the charter. They did their job, public records, well documented, one of our members here served on that party, the city council at the time took a vote to stay out of that race, stay out of the charter commission race, and even after the Board of Alderman and the Common Council approved it, we still had one alderman violate that, and ran, served on the charter commission for two years, and he's been unelectable for the last six years. So this is not something that somebody got a great idea, let's do this, let's do that, took a lot of time and a lot of attention, and the voters were part of the process. And I personally have an issue with anything that takes the voters, that takes the residents out of the process, and us dictating to the voters, after they voted by ninety percent to approve this charter, for whatever reason, I've not had anybody ever come up to me and accuse me, and ask about confusion over this, and I see people in Everett every day, both at church and at my, at my job. I'm thinking that if we need to change the charter, let's do it right, if there's a problem with it, let's do it right, but the voters, the residents, need to be part of the process, and if we're gonna conduct an order here and send it off without even the courtesy of a public hearing to the residents to come up and voice their concerns, we're doing the city of Everett a disservice. Took me a long time to get the question before the voters to be done, and the only reason I stated when this came up a few months ago that I'm done with it, is because I am not gonna get involved in the, you know, keeping this, getting this, educating the public on this process.
I'm sorry, Counsel, do you have any questions for our guests?
I have no questions, but...
Because I do have somebody else with questions, you can keep your comments for after, thank you. Counsel Capone, do you have questions or comments?
No, questions.
Okay.
So, well, to them, comments, thank you, Madam President, to our guests. Obviously, I understand the bigger concern, when we're interacting with these groups, we need to know specifically what their articulated concerns are. Everett's a pretty diverse place, I do think you're hard-pressed to find certain sections of this city predominantly one nationality or another. Everybody in this chamber was voted citywide, you look at this recent election, people know what they want to do and how to vote, and I think we have a lot of diversity that is currently being displayed on this council. Could there be more? Sure. Could there be less? Yes. But I think Everett is a very diverse place, I think everybody has, has their opportunity to be heard, I don't think anyone's being washed out. What I am concerned about is, I want to, I don't want to knee-jerk react to anything, I don't want to get nervous because someone sends a letter, they might do something, we need to know specifically what their concerns are, how they think that we should be improving that, and then whatever we end up deciding to do, I need to echo the sentiments of my colleague, whatever we decide to do as a community, my personal opinion, it should be decided by the voters. It's not something this body should do, it's not something that should go to the state legislature, I think the people have a right to weigh in, and that would be the concerns and issues that I want to relate to the both of you, and as this process goes forward, I ask that you please keep those in mind.
Could I?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to make a few statements on that, if I could. One, obviously, it's not a knee-jerk reaction, because that came in September...
Sure.
And we didn't rush immediately, we did do some due diligence, Counsel Ametsuski's put it on the calendar, the agenda, and we've taken our time, we've asked outside counsel, we're moving quick, you know, efficiently, we're not moving too fast, we're not moving too slow, we are doing our due diligence.
I agree with that, absolutely.
I hope you know that, that's not the way I do things, and I always ask legal counsel, I always work with them, so, I just want to make that statement. In regards to that, we are also having a meeting with that group very soon, I did reach out to them again today, so I'm just trying to coordinate a date to me. So that, that's something that we've discussed about a few different issues. My only concern, and the only thing that we discussed is, once we go through this process, we've discussed what their concerns are, if we are violating, if, if it's in any type of federal statute, if we allow the voters to decide, and they vote no to change, we are still in violation of that statute. So that's where our concern is, is the voters have a right, ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, right, but if we are violating a law, and we give it to the voters, and they say, you know what, I like the way it is, we're still in violation, and the voters do have a right, but not when it comes to violation of federal statutes and equitable, you know, equality across the board in elections, if that's what the violation is. And I'm not an attorney, I'm not standing one way or the other, it was just our opinion, then that's why we're working in this manner, going very slowly, just having the discussions, and that's why we made sure outside counsel was correct in their opinion, that we could...
What we can and cannot do, sure.
Can't, you know, so we are taking our time, I just want you to know that.
Good, no, and I would expect no less. So, just to reiterate that, I want specific...
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
Concerns, what exactly we're not doing as a community, how we're violating whatever statute they may be claiming, and go from there.
I agree, and I, I mean, I did disagree with one part of their letter, because prior to the last six years, we did, at least on the city council side, have both ways, you know, we had a city council...
Yes, it's not anything new.
Correct, we were voted in the wards and at large, so it was that way, so people had that opportunity, but currently, if we are in violation, I want to make sure...
And we'll have to, we'll have to cross the bridge when we get there.
But I just wanted to let you know where we stood and why we're going forward, just discuss, discuss, okay?
Okay, if you don't have any further questions, excuse with the customary thanks, any, I'm sorry, Counsel Adrian?
Yes, so I have worked with the group at least a year before they sent out the letter to everyone, and we've worked with different communities, organizations, as well as individuals in the city, and a lot of people felt like it was unfair, they looked at the city of Lowell and what was going on, and so this isn't something that has been just been one month, this has literally been like a year and a half's work, and we wanted to make sure that we're doing this right, so that's where this came from, just to let you guys know, this has been a long process, and when they sent the letter out, the letter, which is public, and it wasn't in the newspaper, they did note the wards that is predominantly minority, so there's two or three wards.
I just know, I just remember Ward One off the top of my head, so...
Yeah, yeah, so there's, there's at least three, so, just to let you guys know.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Excuse with the customary thanks, if there's no further questions?
And I'll make sure to report that.
And Counselor Ametsuski, what is your pleasure?
Thank you, Madam President, I want to thank the city clerk and Attorney Slattery for actually filling us in, and I think we should lay this on the table, now, I don't want to do a postpone, excuse me. You know, this was brought to my attention a year or two ago, and I, and I really thought from the beginning that a district councilman should be paying attention in his own ward, and, and, you know, getting elected in his own ward, and don't forget, to the members at, at large, you know, we run citywide, we understand that, but the ward councilman should know his ward, and it'd be more cost-effective, you actually might get some more candidates that run for office, I think we had one primary last year for the at-large race, no ward races, I don't think, there was no primary, no, and that's been going on for the last three cycles, maybe one primary in Ward Two, I think there was a few years ago. But I'm here to, you know, I, I heard, this was brought to my attention a year and a half ago, my own feelings on this is my own feelings, I just want to do what's right for the community, and what's legal, so at a certain point, we don't even get to vote on this, when the, when the Secretary of State agrees with this law firm, or whoever they are, and says, we gotta do what's right, we gotta do it, it's, it's not up to us, I'm just giving you my feelings, and my feelings, and I want to thank the city clerk, you explained that very nicely tonight, so I recommend that...
Is there a motion to postpone it?
I don't know, I want to ask the city clerk exactly what he has to...
Could you not do one meeting, I, I know we're gonna need a little more time, could you at least give me...
Sometime in April, March, April.
Yeah, could we give me a one month, which would be the last meeting in April?
Even May, I don't...
Or the first meeting in May, just, I know that...
First meeting in May.
Wheels of motion go to...
All right.
The motion is to postpone it for the first meeting in May.
Yes.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. That'll be the next thing, then.
Excuse me. President, item number sixteen is a resolution offered by Counsel Gurley. Adrian, the city review, excuse me, the city review why individual boards and commissions are paid differently than others.
Councilor Adrian?
So, I see that someone, or someone wrote this note. Do we know who wrote the note?
Attorney, Latanzi?
Latanzi? So, I just want to make a comment about this. So, my piece is not about making sure that people are getting increase in pay or evaluating how much time they're spending. It's not what my piece is about. My piece is about to make, to understand why certain commissions and boards are being paid versus not being paid. So, it's not about, you know, the level of pay they're getting. It's why, for example, the
Disability Commission's not getting paid
Right. Cultural Council's not getting paid, the planning, the zoning board gets paid. That's what the piece is about. And when I brought this up to the mayor, I said, "How come the most diverse boards are not paid and the other boards are paid?" So, that's what my matter is. So, I would like that to be addressed.
Okay. So, can we refer this to the council?
It can go back to him.
Okay. Councilor DePiero?
Thank you, Madam President. When this similar item was discussed in committee, this exact subject matter was brought up about the ones that aren't paid, such as the Everett Redevelopment Authority and many other boards that have a direct impact in shaping this community and its future. And Mr. Latanzi explained to us that that was part of the mayor's initiative going forward, was to evaluate those boards that don't get paid and pay them. So, I see two items that are very much the same. They were discussed. I don't know why we're doing duplicate work. Thank you.
And what committee was this discussed in? Councilor DePiero? Where's the report?
It was
Ways and Means?
Ways and Means, yes, that you were downstairs.
Is it still in committee? I'm sorry, I want to, is it still in commit, is, what?
It was
What was the committee report?
It was in Ways and Means. I believe Councilor Adrian is a member, but she wasn't in attendance that evening, if I recall correctly.
Councilor Adrian?
Do you want me to address?
Address the chair.
So, I just want to make note, the reason why I was not at that meeting was because I had to attend one of the restaurant owner's licensing appeal meeting. So, that was the reason why I was there. That resident called me at least a month beforehand and asked me to be at that meeting. I was told that that meeting was going to start at 6:30, and Jim and them decided to move it up. So, I had to be at that meeting. However, if you're saying that this matter was discussed at the Ways and Means and that there was a report for it, I'll gladly look at it. No, I know. I'm just saying, if there is a report.
Mr. Burley stated that the reports have all been mailed out.
If I may, as the chairman of Ways and Means, that's still in committee
Okay.
At the request of the sponsor, Mike McGlaughlin. If you want to refer this piece to Ways and Means, we can do it all together.
Yep. So, again, it's not about the levels of pay. It's why these different boards are getting paid differently. Just want to make sure. It doesn't stay up there.
Okay. So, would the motion be to refer back to Ways and Means?
Yep, that's fine.
It's never went to Ways and Means?
It's still in the committee.
Your piece, Councilor Adrian, hasn't been in there yet.
So, Councilor Adrian, what would you like to do with your piece? Refer it to Ways and Means?
Yes, we can refer it to Ways and Means.
It's a duplicate piece. There was already a piece in there?
Similar piece.
Yeah, refer it to, what's the difference? Ways and Means? So, is that the motion? You want to refer? I have to make sure this is what you want to do.
Yep, that's fine.
Madam President, on the motion?
Counselor? Would anybody like to invite her up?
This is Councilor Adrian's piece. I'm taking her word for what she wants to do.
Yes, I said, "That's fine." I will, it can go back to the Ways and Means, that's fine.
Okay.
Second the motion.
And we got a second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
We on twenty, correct? Or, did I miss seventeen? No, seventeen we did, sorry. Yeah, twenty. Yes. Madam President, item seven, item twenty is a resolution offered by the entire city council. A request that the honor of the mayor come to the next city council meeting to discuss the possibility of purchasing and staffing a community shuttle bus for our seniors so that they can enjoy the many activities posted throughout the community, including the monthly senior socials. I do believe you should have got a communication, a packet, from Ms. Runa Webby. And I know it's a lengthy one, but it is some information there, so I just want to make sure you got it.
Whose piece is this?
It is, I think it's, well, Councilor McGlaughlin might have started it, but the entire board's on it. But I think it was Councilor McGlaughlin, correct?
Right.
Councilor Capone?
So, do you want to postpone this?
You want to
Councilor McGlaughlin, do you want to postpone it for two weeks so we can digest this, or?
I do, because again, just receiving this tonight, I can't even stop to look at it.
So, the motion is to refer, to postpone it for two weeks, to our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty is postponed to our next meeting.
Okay. Item twenty, twenty-three, correct? Item twenty-three, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne Matusky that the honor of the mayor consider the employment of a clerk of the works for all city projects.
I'll be very brief on this subject matter. Madam President, I did have a conversation with the mayor the other day, and I actually had a conversation with Mr. Sousa from our Community Development Office. I really believe that contractors should be on time, complete the work in a timely fashion, no overruns, and that's what a clerk of the work is supposed to be. He represents the city's interest to make sure that things are done correctly and on time. So, I would like to refer this to the mayor's office, and hopefully, with any future public jobs, construction jobs in the city, any remodeling or anything, that they put somebody that has the interest of Everett at heart, knows a little about construction, to keep an eye on these contractors who disappear. And it's happened on three or four different, well, two that I can think of here that I'm not going to mention them right, well, the fire station we talked about last week. But anyway, let's get real. We need somebody to look after the interests of this community, to not drag these jobs. It's really pathetic. But Mr. Sousa agreed with me. The building department does the private sector inspections, you know, and we need somebody that has construction knowledge, that will be there every day to make sure these contractors complete the work and do it right. And so, I hope my colleagues agree, we'll send this to the mayor, and hopefully, next
the
Yes, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? On the motion, Councilor Capone?
Thank you. I think it's a good point. We all seen projects delay, but before we go and create a new position and fund it, I'd like to hear from the mayor in terms of what he's looking at, costs, et cetera. So, I just want information at this point.
So, I have him present in writing, any information? Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so
With a response in writing
Whatever, response in writing to the council. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Councilor, read item number twenty-four. Now, under new business, I know I've had some hands up, and under new business, I'm supposed to only take directions from the
Sponsor.
The sponsor. Go ahead.
All right. So, with issues with regard to the sponsor, it's, if it's going to be referred to a committee
Right.
Laid over, or it's going for favorable action, then it's only the sponsor. If there are multiple sponsors, it's just one sponsor. And they could decide amongst themselves.
Amongst themselves, who speaks?
But if it's anything else?
If you want further information, if it's going to the mayor's office, then somebody else could speak.
Exactly.
So, on that, we already took the vote. I'm going to make a motion to reconsider it, please. Are you okay, Councilor McGlaughlin? Is there anything else you want to add? Because we can reconsider the piece. Okay. Sorry about that.
Item twenty-four. Madam President, is a resolution offered by Councilors DePiero and Marchesi requesting the administration work with the owners or management of the parking lot at the bottom of Sycamore Street with the hope of allowing resident parking once again.
Councilor DePiero?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be very brief with these couple of items. At one point, this lot was allowable for community use. Since the management has implemented an aggressive towing policy, we've noticed some parking issues backed up into the neighborhood on Sycamore Street where I live and the surrounding streets. I'd like to refer this to Government Operations, invite Mr. Tony Souza, with the hope that we can come up with some kind of agreement, whether it's an overnight placard for residents of that neighborhood, or some kind of deal that the city could possibly make with the management of this lot.
Okay. So, the motion would be to refer to Government's operation and invite Tony Souza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item twenty-five. Madam President, is a resolution offered by Councilors DePiero and Marchesi requesting a stronger police presence in front of Walgreens and Glendale Liquors during evening hours as individuals are loitering, consuming alcohol, and causing quality of life issues in the neighborhood.
I'd like to refer the piece to Chief Maisy, with the hope that he provides some added attention to this area in the dark hours of the day.
So, I have a motion to refer item twenty-five to Chief Maisy for action?
Yes.
And I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item twenty-six. Madam President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Anthony DePiero, respectfully requesting Sergeant Gaff to appear at the next Government Operations Committee meeting to discuss the possibility of a special parking sticker for residents of private ways to help alleviate some ongoing issues.
Councilor DePiero?
There's been some issues with these private ways in regard to unregistered vehicles and issues as such. I'd like to have the conversation. I know that our colleague across the aisle used to live on a dead end. There are some issues that need to be addressed, whether it's fire trucks not being able to get down, garbage trucks. So, I'd like to invite Sergeant Gaff to talk about some ideas collectively.
Second the motion. To invite Sergeant Gaff is this going to Government Operations?
Yes.
And I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item, excuse me, item twenty-seven, is a resolution offered by Councilor Capone that ECTV and the administration take the necessary steps to ensure that all programming on ECTV is broadcasted with closed captioning for the hearing impaired.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Madam President. This is an issue that continues to come up, that people are constantly asking me about. And I know that we have, we have closed captioning on online meetings. It's still got a ways to go. Not every word comes out accurately.
Yep.
And it can cause a little bit of confusion. But I would like to refer this to ECTV and the administration for response at our next meeting, where we're at with regards to being able to do closed captioning with our meetings live, and what we can do to make the online version a little bit more accurate.
So, the motion is to refer this to ECTV with the response back at our next meeting? The clerk got everything?
I did.
Okay.
Great.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item twenty-eight. Madam President, is a resolution offered by Councilor, Councilor Fred Capone, that the mayor and the council collaborate on possible ways to honor and memorialize the service of Councilor Laurine Laurie Bruno and Chief David Butler to the city of Everett.
Councilor Capone?
Madam President, the first thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to open this to all my colleagues, because I'm sure you'd all like to join it. So, I'd make a motion to amend it to include all of my colleagues.
Motion is to amend item number twenty-eight to add the entire city council? Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
On the piece itself, Madam President, Laurie was a great, great woman. Many of us, you know, served with her, knew her well. Everett was her life. She lived on Swan Street her entire life, I think in the same house. And she loved animals. So, I would think if we could do something, maybe even something at the park, Swan Street Park in her memory, I think would be something that she would
As long as it's not down the park that she was fighting all these years.
No, no.
Okay.
No, no. So, if we could do something in her memory, and obviously, Chief Butler served with the department, I think, thirty-nine years, he was chief for quite a long time, something tasteful at one of the firehouses, maybe Central. But if we could refer this to the mayor's office for a response, and I'd like, I'd like this body to work collaboratively with the mayor, because, you know, these are such close ties for this body, that we try to find something that really will, you know, memorialize and honor the service of both these people. So, I'd ask for a response at our next meeting.
So, the motion is to refer item number twenty-eight. First of all, we're going to amend it to the entire city council, and I do have a second. So, we're going to refer it to the mayor's office with a response back our next meeting as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item twenty-nine. Madam President, is a resolution offered by Councilors Stephanie Martins and Councilor DeFlorio, Rosa DeFlorio, that the city council establishes an Everett Affordable Housing Task Force. I do want to just note that Councilor Martins did, we do have something on your desk in regards to the task force all the members should have received.
I just want you to know that Councilor Martin and myself didn't meet with Tony Souza on the holiday, and Councilor Martin is doing a fantastic job with us. So, Councilor Martin?
So, it's our last piece. I'll try to keep it short, but it's an important one. So, housing stability has been one of the most pressing issues in the city of Everett, and we have all heard different concerns in regards to housing and displacement from our constituents. So, this Affordable Housing Task Force resolution, and I hope to be able to counter your support tonight, and I want to thank Council President Rosa DeFlorio and the councils that have reached out to express their support. But, so, this task force has the goal of creating a table to bring diverse voices from the community with different types of housing expertise and experiences to start having discussions about housing topics. And these topics could include taxes, the lottery, displacement, development, tenant protections, zoning changes, you name it. It will function as a platform for housing discussions and an incubator for housing policies so we can use those recommendations to implement policy to correct what the market is doing to our housing market. So, this task force is charged with assessing the current and projected future landscape of housing affordability in the city of Everett, and evaluating current programs and initiatives that are available to produce new affordable housing units and preserve existing ones, and to make recommendations to the mayor and the city council. They'll meet once a month or every two months as applicable. The meetings are public and open to all. And I want to thank the administration and the planning department for being willing for being willing to staff it so we can have minutes and communications. But in summary, the goal is to identify resources and information that will reveal the depth of the housing issues in our community, set metrics and goals, and give recommendations to implement equitable and inclusive development strategies and displacement prevention. So the membership, and I let me just, and we'll present the recommendations to the council. But the membership will be a diverse body of, consisting of 16 members that will have, one, well, the mayor will point a member, the council, council president will point two members, school committee will point a member. And there will be one member appointed from a housing and tenant advocate organization, one member appointed from a nonprofit housing development group, a representative from the business community, three affected persons from the community, a landlord, a tenant, and a senior citizen, a planning and development expertise person, so that'd be Tony Souza, and leaders from local nonprofit social organizations representing the community, representatives from the Everett local, a representative from the Everett Local Housing Authority, representative from the local healthcare system. They've been doing great work with health assessment and the needs. And a representative from a youth homelessness advocate. And so finally, so I would like, well, I would have liked to hear Tony Souza's addition to it because he's very, it's something that they're very excited about so we can really get those housing conversations started in the city. And this is just the beginning of positive and balanced housing measures to come that will add to it and a place to get the housing conversation started. So I would like to count with your support, voting favorably on this action, on this item tonight. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilor. I do have Council McGlaughlin. I know Council McGlaughlin referred this piece back to sponsor. And I'd like to have him speak on this. And I believe Council Capone was also on it.
Correct.
So Council McGlaughlin, you had your hand up first.
Thank you, Madam President.
Would you like to add your name to?
I would respectfully ask that Madam President DeFlorio and Council Martins consider, I added my name as a call sponsor. I think this is one of the most important pieces that we will address in this legislative term. And I would respectfully ask that my name is added as a call sponsor. And the reason I referred my piece back earlier this evening was so that we could put it under the umbrella of this piece because I think this piece is well overdue and well needed. And I look forward to working collaboratively with the administration and all parties involved on this matter. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to add Council McGlaughlin. And Council Capone? Do you have any questions? Or would you just like, go ahead. I'm sorry, Council McGlaughlin, you all done? I'm in a rush. I'm tired. Sorry, Council McGlaughlin. Oh, my God, Capone.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Now, I agree. I think that this is a very important piece. And I was on that piece with Council McGlaughlin that was referred back. And I was happy to do that because we have this framework. I just have two quick questions. One, it says 16 members, and unless my math is wrong, and it might be because it's late, I think there's 17.
There could be. It's probably my math.
It's got to be on.
Okay.
We'll recount them.
Okay. So that's one thing. And then the second thing is, some of these are very straightforward. They're very easy. Mayor picks one, council president picks two, school committee picks one. You've got other organizations? And have we given thought to how they're going to pick their one appointment? And who's going to be involved in that?
Tony Souza.
So I have been working actively with him. I have been in touch with different organizations and organizations that have already been doing work in Everett. And we can present those recommendations again to the council at our next meeting and then just hear your opinions on it.
Okay.
But there are groups that are already actively working in Everett that we can get them involved.
Yeah, that's fine. So I just wanted to, I'm looking at it and going, oh, my God, I think my math is off. So, but it's been a late night. But if the sponsors would be agreeable, I'd like to add my name onto as well because I think it is an important issue.
Absolutely. We got to have you. Thank you.
Like I said, Council Martin has really done a lot of work on this. So I commend her for putting this on. And Council Martin, is it okay to add all these sponsors?
Oh, absolutely. I'd love to add everybody if you're in favor. And just to add too, this is something that the other cities around us and cities across the United States already have adopted. And like I said, this is just a table to bring diverse voices of the community together and to lead to many other conversations and different policies.
So the motion is to amend it to add Council McGlaughlin and Council Capone?
Would any of the other councils like to add names to it? So the entire council, and I appreciate your support.
So you want the entire board? This is a very good piece, believe me. Three hours of listening to Stephanie and Tony Souza on a holiday, on a holiday, just so you know. So the motion is to add the entire city government. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Now, what are we doing with this, Councilor?
So we.
We're referring it, no, Tony Souza?
So let me present it again next meeting just in terms of the suggestions for the appointments and the confirmations.
So postpone it for two weeks?
Yes. Yes.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So item number 29 will be postponed to our next meeting. I think we already did 30, didn't we?
I don't remember. Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Item number 30.
No, we're done.
Item. That'll be 30 and then 32. I have one left.
Oh, she already discussed it.
Yeah. Item 30 is, Madam President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Gurley Adrian to request the mayor's office, human resources, and CFO office to produce an internal audit to show if there are any pay disparities among the city of Everett's employees, including the schools. This would include examining all job classifications and to see if there are any gender or racial gaps.
Council Adrian?
Yeah. So at least in the last six or eight weeks that I've been a counselor, I've had four city employees come up to me about this concern. Two of them are looking into future lawsuits about this. And so for me, what I said to them was, hey, let me work with the mayor's office on this and make sure that we can fix this together as a team. And so when Laura came up and spoke about this during public participation, we went in the back and we spoke about this. And she said, "We're going to work on this together to figure this out," especially because these four employees are very upset. And so one employee is actually at the school and three of them are at City Hall. So this is a huge concern, especially as a city council. I think we need to hopefully resolve this as soon as possible.
So did you want to refer this to the human resource department?
Yes, I would like to refer this.
I have a motion to refer item number 30 to human resources. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
And then we just have the worksheet. Item 32, I'm just going to read it and then it gets immediately sent. Item 32, Madam President, is a worksheet. Item one on the worksheet is a resolution offered by Council Matusky that the sign division replace a no parking sign. This side and street sweeping signs that were removed from Russell Street and Veterans Ave. And two is a resolution offered by Council DePiero requesting the Department of Public Works paint white lines and replace added signage in front of Ferry Street Fire Station similar to the ones at Central Station so vehicles do not block the entrance while waiting in traffic.
So item.
They automatically get referred.
Got referred?
You don't have to vote.
Motion for adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. You have adjourned.